Sorry, we were muted. There we go.
She was muted or we were?
We were.
Okay, Kelly, we're in public comment. Did you want to make a comment?
I I did. I I couldn't hear anything before that, but.
The people on Zoom, did they hear what I just said about the public?
It appears like they didn't.
Okay, I'm gonna, since we were muted, I want to give the rules for the public comment again. Because apparently we were on mute. Okay, the public comments period is a time for the public to make comments to the board. It's not a give and take session. It's not a question they have to do. It's not a time to conduct business. It's a time for us to hear from the public. The rules are each, each person gets three minutes. And we ask that you don't get personal attacks and then you need a civil. So we already called for in the in the room and there were no public comments. So Kelly, did you have a comment?
I I did. I I was at the CDA meeting last week. And there was a motion given by John Schaefer that Jeff voted no for. And at the end of the meeting, it was, it was. Everybody agreed to bring that back to their boards for more discussion. And I didn't see that on the agenda for today. I didn't know if that was something that maybe you should add to the agenda. To discuss that as the next meeting for the CDA is on the 11th.
Okay, so. Excuse me, are you done?
Yes.
Oh, we don't have a back and forth like I just said. So I just want to make clear, are you making a request to us to put something on the agenda?
Yeah, Jeff, Jeff indicated that he was going to bring it back to the to the county commissioners. And the next meeting for the CDA is on the 11th, and I just didn't see any any space for that unless you had a special meeting. Maybe it was just an oversight, but it was it was approved. An honest or by everyone that that they would bring that back, that motion back to their boards for discussion. I was just wondering if if that was something that maybe could happen today.
Yeah.
So I printed out the motion that Umatilla County presented and given it to both the commissioners and it was going to be in the Commissioner update section. As to what the motion was and when it transpired at the CDA.
Okay, so that was our response. Is there anybody else on Zoom that has any? Commenting on that?
Don't have any answers.
Okay.
Uh, just someone, Mr. David A.
David A, could you identify yourself and who you're with, please?
Hi, this is David Almenaro. I'm with Amazon Data Services Inc. and I just wanted to. Speak in in support of the road use agreement. I don't know if there'll be a public. An opportunity to speak later when that, when we've reached that part of the agenda, or if I should kind of say my piece now.
Okay, there's you.
Okay, well, you, Chair and then Board, thanks for giving me an opportunity to to speak here. As as you know, we've heard from me before and for with other Amazon business and you're just like to. You know, point out that the last time we spoke, traffic was a a major concern. Kind of talked about with with Amazon. Development in Moro County, and this is the first time we're seeing a a road use agreement. So in in this county. The way road use agreements happen are kind of two different ways. One is construction during the the development period. And the other is, you know, continue, you know, making road improvements that will support the the ongoing. Operational period of the of the facility. So once the facility is fully built out and all all employees are there. Can the roads support it? So for this this facility, which is in the Boardman Airport area. It was determined that. After a traffic study, which was approved by the planning commission, that there were no. Road improvements needed for the operational period. So the road use agreement you're seeing right now is just to make sure that. All of the construction traffic that this facility's development is generating is going to be, you know. Mint the impact that is going to be minimized and any anywhere and tear on the roads in excess of normal use will will be. Amazon will fund the repair of of that. So that's the that's the agreement you're seeing in front of you today. And that's all I had to say. So thanks for, thanks for giving me the opportunity to speak.
Okay, thank you.
Chair, it might be good just to point out if that that's on the consent agenda. So. There, if it's passed under consent, it won't come up as a single item, just for those on Zoom to to know.
Well, there again, you know, I mean, we've held a public hearing on this.
Of course.
And so whatever anybody says is not part of the public record, so. You know, you make your comment, but the process has been gone through, you know, so. Any other, you see any other ready? Okay, if not, we'll close the public comment and then we'll look to the consent agenda. Do any of the commissioners want to pull anything out of there?
I think to just ask a couple of questions, one on for C and H, so I guess we pull those out and then I will. Just for the record, say, you know, on item B, Amazon Data Services, when I looked at that. That is not a facility that'll be served by Univeris, so just to make clear that anybody. So that term, J C F, that's a facility that'll be served by Pacific or that's listed in that agreement. So with that, I would move for approval of the consent agenda pulling out C and H for further discussion. All second.
Moving to second, if there's any discussion. All in favor?
I.
I can close, we'll see. So.
On.
So we'll start with.
So I'm seeing, I guess, it's just kind of a curiosity question, maybe it's still Kevin to answer. Hey, I'm not reading through there. I didn't see anything that sense. Somebody else is going to be, Univeris is not the way to pronounce it.
Yes.
Is going to be hosting this. Is there any provisions that, since they're in charge of our data? If we are hacked or they are, which specifically since they'll see the data. And if you order, somebody owns a ransom. What's the, who's on the hook for paying for recovering that? This was it. Who's down here? The years ago, the Curry, Curry County, you know, the last I heard, and this was dark preliminary, they were a couple million dollars into restoring their data. And, you know, I understand now, since we're hosting it, we're on the hook for that, I get that. But if a third party is hosting it, what's their liability as far as. Recovery on that or paying the ransom if that's.
Okay. Um, so. Uh, just to clarify, there's actually three different entities that would that'll be hosting the data. It'll be Univeris or Blue Ocean Systems themselves. And then SAP, which is the core financials package, and then PDS, which is the HR package. So. In all three of those, and it's touched on in the master services agreement, and then there's a number of. License agreements that are referenced within that document. I ensured that there were requirements for maintaining. Compliance with security protocols and there's SOC two compliant, which is, I can't go into the details of that. Maybe Jordan's on the. If you want to know more about what that is, Jordan could maybe talk about that. So as long as they maintain that. You know, SOC two compliance, then I I would say that, you know, we're probably. You know, on the hook would because that would be best practices security. We're probably on the hook if there's a ransomware or data loss. You know, if they reach the con terms of the agreement, then there may potentially be legal recourse for the county. But since it is the county's data, then. You know, what to do in the case of a ransomware attack, for example, that's going to ultimately be a decision for the county to to make. But that being said. In the license agreements and the data processing agreements that are referenced in the master services contract. There are provisions that require all vendors to maintain the, you know, of of what would be considered a best practices. Security compliance throughout the duration of the contract.
So in broad terms, the SOC standard or whatever you reference is kind of the. Best practice, level of.
Yes. Yes.
There's some complaints with that. I would assume that that level may evolve as technology and understanding everything.
Yeah.
Is it, you know, is it, he has something else?
No, that's all I have for that.
Since we're talking about it, I got this just a question. On the, how's the. On the, in the, I say P E R P and P D S, say you know, front word final under eight point five. Has a table there with the interfaces.
Uh huh.
Can you tell me, are these, are these all systems, as a system, are these all systems that the county's currently using? They're going to be reporting information from the.
Um, yes, and there's probably more listed on that list of interfaces than what we'll probably, that what will initially. Set up in terms of integration. Any of those integrations, again, are going to, you know, be subject to, you know, standard security, best best practices. But yeah, that's. It's, to put it simply is, you know, the exchange of information between two different systems, so.
So this isn't really going to replace these systems. It's just going to, you know, it's going to replace them. No.
No, these are, so what these are is they're potential points of integration. That we wanted to make sure that we included in the statement of work. So. If we, we didn't want to get down the road and say, oh, shoot, we forgot to include this and then have a change order and additional costs.
I just thought it might be, if 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 they were included. In this new system, there might be some cost saving to us to eliminate.
Uh, and there are some of those, some of those systems that features and functionality are included in the new package. And as those are identified, and if it, if if there's a case for migrating from one system to another, then we would. You know, talk with the department involved and and potentially bring that discussion back to the board. That, you know, would be result in a change order in the implementation, but.
Yeah.
Um, you know, that's that's part of one of the reasons why that these implementations can take a considerable amount of time. You'll note that, you know, what we proposed, what we're our timeline right now is for July first, go live date. But that's doing. Or for, yeah, so that's going to say, that's for a phased approach. So we're we're bringing on portions of the system at a time. And then as we identify if there's opportunities to to leverage the significant investment in this system. And create more value for the county, we're absolutely going to take advantage of those.
No, good. Still kind of familiar myself, still trying to familiarize myself with the functionality of the whole system. So. Is that possible for a lot of people that don't personally understand?
It's, it's a, it's a lot.
Any other questions?
Okay, thank you.
And next one, you want to talk about that with Pink?
And just if Matt can give us a little update, so. D Q went in there and cleaned up where the fuel tanks had been and stuff, so then they found something else and now they're going to go in and remediate that. So I guess the big question is, like, maybe two of them, certain costs to the county, and do they have a timeline when they might present? So, um, yes, they have, this, the initial work was finished up in twenty twenty-three. And as they had found some additional contaminations in there, right as we were wrapping it up, they let me know they would be looking for other funds to be able to do it. The anticipation is that all the costs are on the state as part of this cleanup, as was the previous one. And that they are asking for access of it to start in January, so they can start plotting it out. Survey the exact areas they need or refresh that survey and then excavate, mitigate the issue and. Hopefully with this, get it to a point where then we can dispose of it as surplus property. And we've got that signature issue taken care of? Yes, thank you. So they sent it initially to Commissioner Drago as the owner, and so we we updated that. So. So we've got that, the agreement's in there, and so it will be just authorizing me to be able to sign on that, I believe. And so we can get that taken care of. Actually, no, your three signatures on it, but it gives me his point of contact.
No, because I had a question on this too. It seemed, was I reading in there that they have until twenty twenty-six to be doing this work?
This is a year-long access, and so depending on what the issues are when they get in there. But they usually sign an agreement for a year-long access agreement to assign.
So that, I mean, I know it's assignable, except that. That, I mean, if you sold the property, the the agreement with the, with the. With the D Q would be assignable to the new owner, but this kind of precludes you from selling for us and selling it all, right?
Yeah, because it's a D Q place, but also because it's for closed property, to my understanding, the mortuary is still in place.
Yeah, I just, I I just, I've heard people interested in buying.
Oh, I I'd really like to get it cleaned up so we can.
Oh, no, understood. I just need something to tell.
Yes.
We don't know when it's going to be ready.
So, um, yes, I'm hopefully hoping that in the next year. They'll get this cleaned up and the mortuary, the state legislators put in place comes off and we can. Hopefully put it out on the out market and let someone invest on there, because it's a, it's a nice little corner space there in Iowa.
Okay, so I guess we need a motion to these two things.
So I'd make the motion to approve right in C and H. All second.
Moving to second for the discussion, all in favor?
Aye aye.
All right, motion carried. All right, that's a still consent agenda. Now I'm going to move on to the business items and we'll start with the for a circuit courthouse design team report. And our minister.
Yeah, I'd like to invite the members for our design team, I need to pull up a couple extra chairs, some apologies. And we'll have them introduce you. It's been a little bit since. They also have a. Slides and what's on it. To share. Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
So commissioners, you have Doug Carl and Earl Eastman with Alliance here. And Kelly Stewart and and Austin with DLR Group. And so we have a little presentation here and I think Kelly will kind of walk through the slides for us from DLR Groups.
Yeah, so this is sort of an excerpt, extract, whatever you want to call it, from our pre-design report that we just completed and turned in. At the end of last week, move to the next slide. Okay, there we go. Great. So this is the pre-design report for the Moro County Circuit Court Annex Building that is now located in Boardman. It's the alternate location for the Moro County Courthouse from nineteen oh three that's right next to us. And the courthouses will be forty miles away from each other now. And the property that we're now looking at is the county-owned property on the corner of Columbia and Olson Road in Boardman. It's about two acres. We've since been, since we saw you last, I think a few months ago. We've acquired the site survey for that site to study with our civil engineer. We had a geotech report performed to look at the soil conditions and. Evaluate the types of footings that would be needed for the building on that site. We've looked at zoning requirements for what type of building we could put there and. What the different requirements of the jurisdiction would have in place for us before we start designing. And the map here shows just a little bit of neighborhood context for the site. It's next to. A. In just a general industrial zone that's across the street to the east, that's French phrase. The site itself is zoned light industrial and then. Across to the southeast corner, there's the Boardman Pool and Recreation Center. And then across the street is the only restaurant that's within a mile of the site. And so. Just thinking about the neighborhood and what to do there, we floated the idea of like maybe bringing in a food truck to add to the site to help serve it and. Help it function as a civic building in the current neighborhood. Go to the next slide. So there's a little bit zoomed in. Our civil engineer brought a drone out to look at the site to see what the views would be from it. We are looking at building in the southeast corner of the site. And have met with the user groups to have a meeting to establish goals for the project and some of the goals that. We've come up with for the project are that this needs to serve Moro County for the next fifty to seventy-five years. So we're thinking about it. As a durable building built to last. And the design, we want to kind of activate the community and still pride in Boardman. Be a welcoming building, so make sure that people have a positive. Interaction with the justice center and celebrate those positive experiences that happen in a courthouse, such as. Marriage ceremonies, adoption ceremonies and other traditions that could happen there. And then also safety and security is a big deal for the users. So making sure that everyone comes in the building is safe, secure. Uh, zooming in a little bit more on the site and sort of doing a test fit of it. We will need two separate parking areas. So you can see there's a secure parking zone that'll be. Surrounded by secure fencing and entry gates and that will be used for. The Sally Port and also staff having their own secure entry into the building. And then facing west would be the public parking lot into the public entry for the building. And then on the public side, also a plaza, small plaza. Area for people to queue up when they're waiting to go through security to get into the building and. Some friendly spaces for families to gather when they're outside the courthouse. Uh, looking inside the building at who is using this building, we did. Redo the programming that we had done previously when this building was at the fairground site. So for our. Basically, we we did this programming for that hapner site, and then we did it a second time. For the site where we got back together with the potential. Building user groups and their representatives and interviewed them about what their needs for this building would be. And based on those needs, we came up with square footages. So you can see here the colored bars just represent proportionally what the square footages. Occupy within the building for each of those departments. So the circuit court, the dark blue at the top there. District Attorney, green, justice accord in the grayish blue. And sheriff in holding is the orange. And the state would have public defenders also occupying this building. And so you could see. Here just roughly like in a bar graph form, how much of the building goes to each of those people. So we have right now a twenty-eight thousand five hundred square foot building planned out. And that's the optimal from meeting with users and. Making sure that they have all the spaces for their department to fully function within the building. And to fit on the site at this location, that will mean that twenty-eight thousand five hundred square feet is probably looking like it's a two-story building. At least.
Uh, just just a point in describing from our. I mean, originally we had about twenty-four hundred square feet and we were looking at it down in.
Twenty-four thousand.
Twenty-four thousand, thank you, at the fairground site. The growth of the forty-five hundred square feet is is specifically putting a full justice court area in it. It was kind of a reduced. Hearing room here at the fairgrounds that that would assume moving the justice court from here again over here. And a little bit of growth in district attorney and then also the public defender is a new quantity in there. It's something the state's asking for and is a new initiative that they're that they're implementing that will be required over the next five years. And we figure if they're going to require, we might as well incorporate that in into the into the space planning. So we did have some growth from when we were looking at it originally here at the. Fairgrounds.
And that growth isn't necessarily all tied to it being in a new location. It's because we've met with the users again and.
And had had some changes, so.
Yeah, I think the only real difference is that the Boardman site's a lot flatter than the fairground site. And so the fairground site, we were looking at maybe. Reducing it by one elevator because we could have an entrance on the upper floor. So that's really the only thing that has to change between the two sites. Yeah. So there's a breakdown of the square footages numerically and what Matt said. The public defender space is one of the ones that grew since we last saw the program. Going, the justice court courtroom going from a half courtroom to a full courtroom. The addition of an elevator. And then intake office and fingerprinting for the sheriff to fully function here. And then the district attorney didn't previously have a grand jury room and now they would have a grand jury room. So we decided to put that into the program, which brings us to twenty-eight thousand five hundred and forty-four. Square feet and we did a, we engaged an independent cost estimator to look at the cost for that building. And he gave us his cost and together with the team here, we estimated. What a total project budget would be, which isn't just the construction costs that a contractor would bid. It's. So much more than that. If you want to help me with the quick overview, you know, all sorts of fees, insurance, furniture.
Arch- architect fees, management costs, insurance, bonding, you know, all that fits into soft cost furniture or F F and E.
The state of Oregon has a one and a half percent green energy initiative cost that you factor in. That falls to the bottom as well. So. In in some situations, you'd assume the general contractor's cost being the hard cost, maybe there's thirty percent soft costs. At this level of planning, anyway, that's that's generally a a number of the. Um, at this level of planning, anyway, that's, that's generally a, a number that, that you would probably go with, so.
Which leads us to estimating fifty million dollars as something to plan for as a budget for the total project. Now, there is the fifty percent state matching funds, which is specifically for the Circuit Court. And if this building were only Circuit Court, then it would be a fifty percent match of that total project budget. But because there's other departments in here, like the District Attorney, that don't qualify for that match, we have to do some math to figure out what the fifty percent match would actually be of. And so fifty percent of the qualifying spaces means seventeen million would be what the state would provide, leaving the county with thirty-three million as what they would need to provide. Yes.
So basically, the county is doing sixteen million dollars worth of office space for itself.
I'm sorry.
Zero or six?
Well, if, if it's split fifty-fifty in the diff- and we have thirty-three million falls to us.
It's, it's, it's not fifty-fifty. They, they are, the state is basically giving you fifty percent of some of the space. So when you
That's what I'm saying.
So when you factor the whole building, it doesn't come out, it, it comes out more of like thirty-two percent of the total space, not fifty percent.
Thirty percent of
So, so the statement, what you're gonna get from the state of Oregon, based on current estimates, is seventeen million dollars.
I get that. But if you take just the Circuit Court space, no county space, and the state will pay half of that, right? Then anything above that is county space that we've added.
Correct.
And that's sixteen hundred dollars, my man.
Did he, so?
Because the Circuit Court Building, I think the point game is making it be thirty-four million.
You're saying six, sixteen, I'm sorry.
Oh, one six.
Sixteen, I thought you were saying sixteen.
Same, sorry.
Yeah, that's where I didn't get the money.
Yes.
I mean, if it was just a standalone Circuit Court Building, they paid half, we paid half, seventeen million of it. So you got a budget of thirty-three, so the rest of it is county
Yep.
add-ons, which comes to sixteen million.
Correct.
Okay.
Um, next slide. So we are, yeah.
I guess before you go through the schedule, I would, I would add that um, at the end of programming, everyone's had a chance to say what they want. Typically, the building's as, as big as it's gonna get. Um, and the cost estimates, because they are so far out, um, there's extra contingency built in. Typical project design over the next year, as we uh, refine the project and get better definition, typically the costs come down. The building didn't get cheaper per se, but as we refined it, now know more about it than the estimators. Uh, feel more confident giving a, a much closer number, and we, we take less contingencies. So typically, the number, when we get to schematic design, design development, and finally construction documents, the numbers whittle down. Everyone's nervous at this point in time, so you fatten the number a little bit. So it's probably as big as it's gonna get, if that makes sense.
And we are on a trajectory right now that's shown here that keeps us rolling with this project, where the next step is to engage a contractor. This is a CMGC project. So the advertisement, I believe, just went out. And you'll see CMGC as the next few critical path items when we meet with you next month. We should have their proposals ready for review. And then we'll take some time to review those proposals, select a CMGC awarded officially to a contractor. And then, once we have a contractor on board, they would do their own cost estimate, which, which starts to be more realistic because they're the ones doing the work rather than our independent cost estimator, who's helping to estimate the cost. Um, our schematic design is, we're ready to kick off tomorrow with that next phase. That would normally be the plan. Once we finish pre-design, we, we get approval potentially to move into the next phase. Um, the way that phase goes until, let's see, March seventh would be when we have that phase completed. And that would be when the contractor would have their cost estimate as part of that package. Same as how we're presenting the pre-design package with the cost estimate to you. We present a schematic design package with an updated cost estimate to you. And that would include any changes made to the program and projects between now and then.
And some of these days are tied to your meeting schedule. So for instance, the uh, February fifth, I believe, is a P O C meeting date. And so that's, you know, we've tied that one. So when we say award, that would be something that, you know, you guys award. We come to you with a recommendation.
Yeah. And then beyond schematic design, we have another phase called Design Development, where we start to look in more detail at the project itself, like collect cut sheets for actual pieces of equipment that are going into the building. So we're just getting more and more detailed until the construction document set, which is when the drawing is, the building is completely designed, the drawings are complete, ready for permit. And shortly after that, um, which takes us into almost a year from now, the um, construction would kick off. We'd break ground in about a year, if we stay on the current schedule that we're at. And it'd be about a fourteen-month schedule. So that would take us to a February twenty-twenty-seven ribbon cutting ceremony for the courthouse. Any questions?
I don't know.
I've had sticker shock.
Thank you, thank you all.
Um, and last time we met, uh, we didn't, we did not have an estimator here, um, uh, we didn't have an estimator taken in yet. Um, and I know that those numbers are very conservative. Um, the size of those numbers, though, make me um, uh, question my proposal to have the Justice Center um, located there. Um, I'd have to go back and figure out how to get back there, but um, um, what, do you recall what the portion of the Justice Center is? Yeah. And so, I mean, with the, with those, that, I mean, we could, we could pull that off and put it in the yeah, keep it at the Oregon site. Um, but that's only gonna pull off, um, you know, maybe five, five, six million um, of, of that project cost. And that wouldn't be a direct cost because shell and everything is still there, which, which would be bad. Um, so it's a much more expensive than, I know these numbers are conservative. But they're high. And the uh, the half of the, half the state, that one thing, the O J D, uh, very specifically take the percentage that's theirs and then split it in half. We have the twelve point seven five, we've had an additional for one point five, but we would have to be going back to the uh, Judge Hill and saying, your, your side is seventeen million. Um, and we either need to somehow curtail the court side of things, we need to bring in some money, um, to the, the project.
So I guess for clarification, when we've talked about members before, it wasn't pointed out, but where the soft costs included it.
Our initial estimates were like eight hundred dollars per square foot. Did that include the
Construction.
Construction cost.
So that did not include the soft cost. So I mean, I think that's important to know because people are going to see and actually that we talked about a twenty-five million dollar building, and now we're talking about a fifty million.
Yeah.
And so I think that it's important to point out that those original numbers weren't all being false.
There's gonna be a lot to play in. My thought is, is I think we need to go back to ground zero and start looking at everything we've added on, all the uses of county uh, offices and who we had in there. And, and just kind of, so we get, I mean, because we went with the, with an estimate that was presented to us by everybody, you know, twenty-five million, and it's kind of, you know, what's gonna be in there, what is it, you know, what offices. I would like to go back and, and refresh my mind of, of where all our offices are at. What's, you know, the costs associated, like these two out costs for the Justice Court. Take a look at everything. That's what I'd like to do. Because, I mean, this is pretty tough for me to walk out and tell somebody, well, it's not twenty-five, it's fifty. Sorry.
Well, the calling cost never was twenty-five.
That's what we put out.
I, I understand.
Yeah. So that's what it is. When you put it out, that's what it is. I mean, you, you, you get into where you have to explain soft costs, and then their eyes glaze over and they go, okay, you never said soft cost before. Anyway, that's what I would like to do. I don't know what the rest of this.
So on the um, Public Defender's space, it's gonna be required. So is that the state's picking up part of the tab of that, if they're going to require that, or?
So that one, uh, and correct me, was that included in the sixty-eight percent statement? Okay. So that, that's being included in, in that portion. The District Attorney is not. Um, and as you can see by this breakdown, um, the only now the only one is in there is um, is the Juvenile Department, which is kind of small, and the Justice Court, which is significant. I mean, four thousand square feet is there. The Juvenile Department is just more or less a, a, a small uh, room to, to put any of the victims or the uh, the clients that are there to clients uh, before they go up to court. So that would be hard to pull out. The Justice Court would be the easy one to pull out and, and separate it from it. Uh, District Attorney, um, we could uh, review and revise that, that uh, that square footage and see what we can pull down. But we don't have a lot of just county-centric items in here. We do have to pay the full cost of the District Attorney. That's uh, uh, that's part of the agreements that were made decades ago, uh, from what I've, uh, what I've found out. And we split the, split the cost of the Circuit Court area fifty percent. The percent is the pay that they have to use. So we can decrease the footprint just a little bit by separating. We do have some operation maintenance challenges in that, because then we'd have three locations that would be providing court security. And that could be a challenge for the, the Sheriff's uh, Office. But that would be a significant error. Um, pretty much one way to, to slice this building down a little bit. The Circuit Court itself, uh, those are statutorily required, uh, space requirements. It's gonna feel palatial compared to what they have over here, but it is what's set in the, in Oregon statutes. And so we do not have much design latitude with that, um, unfortunately. So, so to your point, Commissioner, or the question about the, the state money or state match, um, you saw there seventeen million, right? That has, that number has, didn't come from the state. That's, that's our factor as we look at it. Um, we met with, as a team, a week ago, we met with O J D. This Public Defender Space is new, but they've indicated, yeah, we're gonna, you know, match that. And so, uh, the seventeen million is a number we think it'll get to. You had twelve and a half, they added a million and a half. We think it'll get to seventeen when it's all said and done, based on what we currently programmed.
Uh, you're not asking for any action today. So it's just basically an information board. So where do you go from here? Uh, uh, based on what you've been instructed to do previously, what's your next step?
We would jump right into schematic design. And as you can see, we've uh, kicked off the hiring of the CMGC, who would be the contractor.
Based on fifty million dollar cost for the building?
Uh, based on a thirty, thirty-some million, the construction cost. The contractor's not gonna buy the furniture, they're not paying the soft costs, et cetera. That's a construction number that they're based on.
Did we approve a certain cost for this building, or we just said, go for it and pay for it later now? Is that how it works? I mean, if you come back and say, okay, it's gonna be double, do we have any, I mean, as a, well, we've already been approved to move forward with all the supplies and stuff, irregardless of the, of its double price. Or what, where, I don't understand where that's at, is, is the B O C has any input or, or not, or whether, how to move forward on this.
Definitely. The, I mean, this, this is not finalized. This is part of the informational to bring the same. This is where the project's at. Um, uh, the original, the original uh, documents and all, all were construction uh, base costs. The soft costs are, I, much higher than I thought. Construction costs have increased with the loss of the year. Um, I I would like to say these are very conservative costs, but I'm not gonna roll the dice on, on just saying we can cut off ten million dollars because it's conservative.
Understood. I'm not, I'm not, I'm kind of past talking about all the costs, because we just did that. And that's why I asked him, what's your next step? And he said, we'll move forward with the schematic design. So apparently, they have, they feel they have the okay to move forward irregardless of this new figure that they've given us.
Can I, can I re-answer the question fewer than?
Yeah.
So, so based on our current schedule, what you've hired us to do, that would be our next step. However, if you tell us to change gears, which we've done a couple times already, we originally started building the, on the Fairground Site. And, and we're putting our energy towards that. But that changed based on, on what you guys asked us to do. So if you come back and ask us to do something different than what we've shared with you, because today's just an update, we would certainly change gears and do something different. That's our current schedule. That's what we've been working towards. You know, we planned this whole thing out for you, and all we've done is shared our plans with you. But if the plans need to change, we're certainly malleable and would, you know, we work for you. We would do whatever you want.
You understand our position that the price has doubled and just saying, well, this is just an update.
We do.
We're moving along as business as usual. It, i- is that, that, that seems to me to be a little
Understood, but until we hear different, you asked what the next steps would be, and I answered.
That's why I asked, you're not asking.
But let me assure you, let me assure you, as a team, we knew there was, we assumed there was gonna be sticker shock. And that you guys behind the scenes might have your own discussions and, you know, wanna make changes or wanna do something differently. But again, you asked, what are our next steps there? Well, we showed you a schedule and, so that's, that's where we would go unless you tell us otherwise.
So that's goes together with my question is, you're not asking for any action from us today. You're not asking us to reaffirm the program or move forward or anything. You're, if we don't do anything, you're moving forward with a fifty thousand dollar project.
Correct. Matt, Matt asked us uh, previously, you know, uh, to put this data on our calendar and come to you with an update. So that's
I'm just trying to get the context of why we're, what it, what it is we're talking about. It's an update. It's a price doubled. You're not asking us to approve anything. You're gonna move forward with, with schematic design now. Irregardless of the double in price. I just wanna make sure the air is cleared on where it's going from here.
So unless, unless we hear otherwise, that would be the next step. That's where the programming goes.
I made my fields here. I think we ought to do a little more deep dive into what we're doing here and find out, you know, what all, what all involved, and take a fresh look at, at where we're spending our money.
So what is the, if you back out the soft costs, what is the new construction cost?
It's like thirty-eight million and a fifth, around there.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that sounds right. Yeah, so maybe fifty percent increase in the construction cost.
Yeah, the, this is the first time, even though we've been working together for a year, first time we've been able to get to this spot, put a total project cost in front of you guys. You know, it was a, a start, stop, start, stop. Now we've got finished this um, programming phase. And so by design, there would be, you know, this is a And so by design, there would be, you know, this is a spot where you can say, okay, hold on. After schematic design, we come back to you with another, okay, now we've got dialed even a little further, same thing, okay, stop, redesign. So there's, in the process, there are spots where it's intended that the commissioners could say, hold on, you know, stop. So thi- this is just the first one of those. It's the first time they've reached this total project cost.
So, I mean, some lessons or thought, I mean, Richard.
I would assume that a lot of the cost increases because of the longing of the way we're doing.
Well, we, we had certainly indicated that early on that that uh, and and because we didn't have a total project number ever. Um, that we we were using a number, well, we, at that, at one point, we knew the state was gonna give twelve and a half million. So, you know, if we're gonna spend at least that, so I think that that twenty five million dollar number that's been used a lot in discussion was just a number.
It was the twelve and a half double.
Twelve and a half times.
Hundred percent.
So.
Discuss early on that we knew there was gonna be a other buildings that were gonna be added on, but it wasn't like we didn't know it was gonna go above twenty five million dollars. It was just, we didn't know it was gonna go to this part.
We had a question. When it was potentially at the mill site, we were looking, there might be a four or five million dollar utility project, you know, so we we just didn't know. So now we're at a spot where something could be defined and, you know, we're here. We we had a little, but we knew it was gonna be problematic, you know, we 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 knew that. But it was set up to be a presentation meeting, so we came to give a presentation. It, we went through this little exercise, you know, if you pulled out. What space was it? I mean, Matt Matt basically did it already too.
Matt did just a circuit.
Yeah, could you cut five or six million right off of the top, probably? But then it's a forty four million dollar project, still probably a a big problem for this group, so. We didn't prepare what if scenarios because we just need to give you guys an update. Here's where we're at, you know.
I just hope everyone uh, realizes or is sensitive to the fact that we interact, interface with the public. And nobody else does. So we we take what you tell us and we tell them. You know, and they, and our reputation, our, you know, truthfulness or whatever you wanna say is on the line.
Understood.
So, you know, to say, well, it was just. I mean, if I'd have known that from the beginning, I would have said, told people, I don't see costs, I mean, twenty five million, twenty five million. I said, it could be more, it could be fifty million, you know, I mean, if I'd have known that.
Got it.
I would have told them. So you, so I just hope that you understand the position we're in. Cause we are the interface with the public and they come to us for what's going on and what's, and all the information about it, so.
No, no, we totally understand.
Okay, so. I guess that's it, huh?
Well, while this is presentational, doesn't preclude the the commission giving any direction or guidance. Um, you know, the one thing, the one thing that would be easiest is to slice off the justice court. Even in here, um, that that, you know. Uh, means any kind of space needs that we have, we'll have to look at other solutions in the in the future. But that would conceivably reduce the cost of the project by uh, by, you know, ten fifteen percent. And so um, that was something that I had asked as a, as an idea. And the commission said, yeah, that sounds like good to consider, but this is sticker shock. Um, to the point and um, and um. Quite frankly, I didn't have full inkling of it until this morning. I heard the construction costs, but the soft costs are are significant. And so um, if we, if we just wanted to slice off the justice court and leave it more or less the circuit court and the district attorney, that's something that other counties have done. Because of the uh, uh, quality requirements of the of the court systems and set by the state now, they just need it. One day's necessary coordinates.
Okay, well, we really don't have any action on request or there on the table here, so unless anybody else has any further discussion, I think. You've already done it.
I guess.
Move on to the next slide.
I guess because they're going to need direction of what they want to have happen. So I guess I would want to ask staff to bring back a cost. I mean, we have what the cost potentially could be, including the justice court. Bring back what the cost would be, you know. Without the justice court. Because, I mean, basically we're making it a bare bones building that. And give it to us at our next meeting and then we give.
We're gonna have a look for some.
They're gonna need direction on it. I mean, the more we kick this gang down the road, the more costs are going up.
So, okay, I just wanna keep it in the meeting, then we can make a, uh, so take some action.
Yeah. Because, I mean, we've all seen how the price of building materials go up and if the top of tariffs go in place, I mean, we get a lot of our building materials from Canada and other places. It possibly just gonna escalate.
Yeah.
Longer we wait.
Don't disagree with that, so.
And and with the cost adjustments, obviously, if we remove the justice court, like you said, there's gonna be extra costs and security. I think that we need to be transparent and show that as well.
Okay. Okay. Good to go, Matt? What we're gonna do?
I think so, um. Matt, Matt, let us know how we can support, you know, that effort, but get them good information. And.
Okay. Anything further on circuit board, the report? All right.
Thank you, Dan.
John Zoom?
We don't see her.
Yeah, I don't see her in there.
Okay.
Sure.
All right, we will, I guess, just kinda. Any others?
Well, she gave us. She gave us. She gave first.
A written report, oh. Okay, yeah, I saw that. I I said I thought for some reason she wanted to give it. Never mind, okay. Tourism, we we have her written report. Okay, tourism consultant, someone I am right boy, all right? There she is.
Hope everybody had a good Thanksgiving holiday and all that good stuff, you know, for the big. Christmas season. So uh, for the record, I'm Perry Walshley. I'm contracted with Morrell County as tourism coordinator. And this is kind of a a wrap up of uh, Morrell County um, tourism for twenty twenty four. Um, not only do I do the um, coordinating of tourism for Morrell County, I do it for uh, Yumitilla County as well. And those two counties together are known as Oregon's rugged country within the the Oregon breakdown into Eastern Oregon and then the four territories in Eastern Oregon. So I'm um, vice president on that Eastern Oregon Visitors Association Board. And I also am on representing our food trails uh, that are through Oregon's rugged country on the Travel Oregon Food and Farm Trails. Um, so on slide two. There we go. So Morrell County Tourism Objectives, um, and and I went through this with you guys uh, back this summer when we had the workshop to promote sustainable attractions, events and experiences for visitors and community families. Support the small businesses, share the stories and the history of Morrell County, support and protect the natural resources. Utilize collaborative opportunities and strengthen the Morrell County's economy through tourism. So on the next slide.
Takes a second, sir.
Okay, uh, this slide uh, discusses the direct impact in the state of uh, Oregon for the tourism industry and it correlates with the following slides. You will see in Eastern Oregon, that yellow area um, is down by less than a percentage. But overall, in the following slides, you will see that uh, Morrell County is measurably up. So next. So for the state of Oregon, the direct travel spending is uh, fourteen billion. Uh, when we did the workshop back in uh, the summer, I only had the twenty two updates. So um, it's up, um. It's up from twenty twenty two. Uh, the employment in uh, industry is up to over eighteen, a hundred and eighteen thousand. Um, this is just kind of uh, the breakdown for the state of Oregon. So this annual report is commissioned by the Oregon Tourism Commission, known as Travel Oregon. It's Dean Runyon and Associates that do this annual report. Um, it's developed to assess the economic impact of travel uh, to the state of Oregon. Travel industry represents an important component of Oregon's uh, state economy. Spending associated with travel in Oregon generates earnings, employment and taxes throughout the state. This report brings together data collected uh, by many different resources, both public and private. They are relevant to the measurement of the travel throughout Oregon. The analysis synthesizes the data and generates estimates for the impact of travel in the counties and the state. So um, on that next slide, this kind of breaks down. Um, you will see in uh, at the top up there from twenty twenty two, the total uh, direct spending in Morrell County was eighteen million, two hundred thousand. For twenty twenty three, it is uh, it was estimated that there was twenty million dollars in direct spending within uh, Yumitilla, or sorry, Morrell County. So on that next slide, it kind of breaks it down, um. Into accommodations and food services, arts and entertainment, recreation. So Dean Runyon and Associates go through like uh, visa receipts and um, they have all sorts of ways to gather up this information and this is uh, within that yearly report. And each county gets uh, broke down, each region gets broke down, and then, of course, that filters up to the state. So on that next slide, um. This is uh, this is uh, the average expenditure in overnight visitors. So the overnight visitor volume from Morrell County is based on cross referencing visitor surveys, visitor air travel um, and lodging and data. Um, so we know that the majority of the money that's is spent within Morrell County are those people that are paying to stay in the um, short term rentals, the hotels, motels and RV parks. Um, because they are um, anticipating that um, that breaks down to the T L T that uh, is dispersed out uh, to the state and to the regions for operating costs. So um, next slide. Okay, so for Morrell County in twenty twenty three, that broke down to um, just over two hundred and sixty eight thousand uh, visitor nights. Okay, um, the travel spending directly supported two hundred and sixty tourism related jobs. Uh, the direct spending in Morrell County was twenty million dollars. And um, on that, it's actually at um, nine point six percent. I went with the the other slide when I was putting this together, so. Back two slides ago, you would notice if you compared the twenty two to twenty three, it's up nine point six uh, percent there. So the amount of visitor spending that supports a job is over sixty nine thousand dollars. And for every hundred dollars uh, that a visitor spends, it contributes to thirty four dollars of the employee or the proprietor earnings. And that generates uh, four dollars to local in uh, and state tax revenues. So on marketing, all of these bullet points have been marketed through the following venues. The social media exposure is um, generated by likes and shares and paid ads. Our audience on social media is twenty seven percent men and seventy three percent women. The largest age demographic is forty five to fifty four. And on that seventy three percent women, twenty five or twenty percent of them are sixty five. Uh, these are the analytics that um, the social media platforms uh, give us to kind of operate on and and look um, and determine sometimes if you're doing a campaign, where to kind of target those. Uh, most of the location uh, are, the location and most of our followers range within the Pacific Northwest. Um, I make um, make sure that I uh, uh, take on the opportunities to get um, into the co-op marketing of that E O V A and Travel Oregon. Uh, that's more bang for our buck when we get that exposure. Um, and Otis, which I explained during the workshop, the um, Oregon Travel Information System. Eat, stay, play, events and attractions. Um, we make sure our updated and listed there. So um, on this, the E O V A Visitors Guide is our largest fulfillment piece uh, that um, I put money into uh, for both counties. Um, we are in the process of working on the twenty twenty five um, publication. So down there on the bottom, you will see navigate that takes us through Oregon's rugged country, which is that green little part within the map up above uh, Yumitilla and Morrell Counties. So this year, that green uh, space on that slide, you'll see was a half page ad that listed um, eat, stay and play uh, places within each of the communities and I um, emailed out to each mark uh, communities to make sure that the restaurants were still, you know, relevant and and places to stay and and make sure we had updated information. Um, so uh, since um, coming on in twenty twenty two, so the last three years, the Morrell County exposure in this guide is up twenty three percent. Um, and uh, potential for more growth uh, within that. So on that next slide, you'll see listings of Morrell County uh, that we've developed and they reside in the Eastern Oregon Visitors Association platform. Uh, this has been utilized within publications as well and uh, through Travel Oregon and on the Otis, the Oregon uh, Tourism Information System. So, next. So one of the big assets that um, our region has is uh, we're we're. So um, back in twenty fifteen, we started this um, development of these farm trails to go throughout the counties. Um. This is an ad that I put in last year's uh, E O V A guide and the Q R codes take people to the um, online platforms where the businesses are listed that are involved in it, so it's more exposure for those businesses as well. Um, I I co-opted an opportunity with Eastern Oregon Visitors Association to bring an influencer out this past summer. Her name was Judy Ann Wu and um, she has a large following and is in tourism. She's a professional chef and um, travel influencer. So we brought her out here to Eastern Oregon and she went through North Morrell County and through Yumitilla County parts. And um, we got a really um, it bolstered our exposure through uh, this um, uh, campaign that we did with her. In uh, uh, the I eighty four rest stop. The eastbound uh, just out of Boardman. I also have a panel up there that explains the River to Hills Farm Trail, which goes through Yumitilla and Morrell County together. Um, this is a uh, a kiosk investment that we, through Certified Folder, had the panel developed and put there. And uh, we have brochures out there that uh, for people that are coming through, can grab them, as well as the E O V A magazine. Um, so the River to Hills that goes through uh, Morrell and Yumitilla County was the first of six regionally developed um, for food and farm trails. Um, we have the videos that have been constructed, we have brochures. Uh, we've also had exposure um, on Oregon Live and through a couple of the local TV stations in Portland um, on their news uh, broadcast uh, segments. So um, so next slide on the grant update. So last year I applied for a grant uh, for Oregon's rugged country. This was to expand the local business owners' understanding of how to better welcome customers with disabilities. According to the Institute of Educational Leadership, uh, nationally, people with disabilities have more than a hundred or five hundred and four billion in disposable income. Travel Oregon has been working the last number of years to develop a program to help industry partners and businesses to be more inclusive to those with mobility and sensory issues uh, that are coming to Oregon. Um, on this grant, uh, it was a Travel Oregon Competitive Grant and I was awarded uh, twenty two thousand seven hundred dollars to do these um, workshops and it's uh, may, this year we launched the workshops and to expand the business owners' um, uh, uh, understanding. Then those were followed by site visits with um, Uh, uh, understanding, then those were followed by site visits with, um, Ashley Schaefer. Who is in a wheelchair herself, so those businesses got to, um, have firsthand experience from Ashley. On what maybe they could do to be a little bit more accommodating to people traveling. So when we talk about disabilities, we're not only talking about mobility, but we're talking about sensory issues as well. So in the phase two that we're doing now through the grant, uh, we're following up with, uh, a number of those businesses through Morrell and Yumitila County. Um, on how to, um, help them be more accommodating. Those businesses will be listed in an online platform called BluePath.org. Uh, this will be, um, used, uh, through the state and through our region to, um. To help people find businesses and accommodations that are more, um, uh, accommodating. For people with, uh, accessibility issues. So we are also, uh, in the process of, uh, putting together some sensory bags to leave at businesses. So if they have somebody come in that is having some difficulty, we are able to hand those out, um, as well. So, um, is there any questions so far?
No, more people are, uh. Well, I don't know more, but sorry, whoever agrees, but they're using E Vs. Uh, and I might have missed it because I was looking at some of these slides. Have you identified where E Vs are in this county for people who might be traveling? Because that's a big deal, you know?
It is.
Their battery runs out, they're.
Oh, I've had conversations, I, yeah, I know.
I he- I understand some people plan their trips based on where charging.
They do, so, uh, right now Boardman has Tesla hookups. Uh, I think, I forget four, I forget how many, um, Tori told me, but. Um, I, I'm not aware of any else that are coming through Southern County. Uh, but I do know. Oh, there is.
There's one in I, only one in Hattler.
Yeah, okay.
No, there isn't one in Lexington.
No, okay, okay, yeah, no, I was just aware of the one in.
So if somebody wanted, say a tourist wanted to come. And take a day trip into, down there, or a longer trip into Hattler, they could go, oh, they got an E V. Is that possible to identify that in your advertising?
Um, you know, we can't take that on separately, absolutely, uh, regionally, we haven't stepped into that, um. One of the, one of the more, um, and Matt, you can go to that next one, because this will tie into this next, um, slide. So when people are traveling, how Travel Oregon assesses, uh, the, the money that gets distributed out through each region is through the T L P tax. Uh, so heads and bets is kind of a, a thing, um, you know, that we like to help promote. Uh, but, uh, traveling, obviously, when you're coming through the area, um, and accommodating people with those E Vs. Is something that I think, um, that stepping into twenty twenty-five, it would be great to advertise those. Um, so I will make a point of collecting up the information on those and, um. Getting that information out, but regionally, that's not something we've done yet.
No, no, I would think regionally, it's just whatever advertising you, you have been doing, whatever you have available is. Would it be harder to just add in there? We have E V stations.
Not at all.
I think you have to differentiate between Tesla and.
You, you do, you do, because of the connection, yeah, so some people, I guess there's adapters or some, I'm not really. In, in the know on that.
The regular E Vs, Tesla let the regular E Vs hook up to their chargers. But I don't know if it's quite personal.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know.
That's the way it went.
Yeah. Um, so, okay.
I don't know, but that seems like something that might, maybe might be a good tourism.
Noted, be, be, absolutely. Okay, so on this slide, we had, uh, kind of touched on this, uh, back during the workshop. This past summer, this is just kind of some highlights going down, a, a reminder of. Of, uh, kind of how the transit lodging tax works within the state of Oregon. So in, in some of the conversations that I've had, um. Uh, whether they're in the, um, lodging industry or, you know, uh, countywide, uh, promoting their communities and stuff. Uh, this, this is something I think that the county needs to consider moving forward. Um, I'll continue to do the outreach and to educate people on the, the benefits. Should Morrell County move forward in doing this. Uh, committee would need to be formed to oversee the legalities and the implementation. And of course, a policy plan developed into disbursement of funds. We are still held by the, uh, the legislation statutes that are put, uh, down through the T L T tax within the state of Oregon. Uh, which I think would be completely beneficial to our communities should we put a grant program together with, uh. Part of those funds, uh, to help them, um, have some control and, and a little bit more availability on, uh, some development of. Attractions or events within their communities, so. Any questions on the T L T?
Given the wide range of percentages, what is the most, uh, second, you mean three percent being? Kind of low end?
Yeah, yeah.
Up to eleven percent.
So, upon forming a committee, you would kind of, uh, dive into your research. You'd taken, um, some of the information from the association counties, associate, or Lake of Cities. Um, because each community is still held by that dispersment of percentages. Um, within the Travel Oregon breakdown of how much is supposed to be used for tourism, how much can go to their general fund. Um, and, and stuff like that, um, so a lot to be considered, uh, moving forward with it, but. Um, I think it's very advantageous. So on the next slide. Moving forward, we're already working on the, the twenty twenty-five Eastern Oregon Visitors Guide. Um, I have submitted information for, um, possible articles. And I work with Susan Crowe, who is the Marketing Director. And, uh, getting the communities involved in the businesses, and I know a number of Morrell County, uh, communities have already come on board with their marketing. For the new publication, so, um, moving forward, uh, the accessibility grant, we will be wrapping that up in April. Uh, because of our involvement with it on the Travel Oregon side of it, uh, we've been asked, um, to. Get involved in, uh, some state and national opportunities, but that looks like I don't have the dynamics yet. Uh, but it has to do with the, the accessibility, uh, stuff that we've been doing in Oregon's rugged country. Um, so, developing dark skies, so dark skies, um. Is a, is a huge movement, and Morrell County sits at the southern, or South Morrell County sits at the northern part of the, uh, largest big sky sanctuary. Um, actually in the world, um, and so, um, Vincent and I have talked, you know, maybe getting the O H V park. Involved in putting something together, uh, to highlight, um, uh, you know. Less ambient light around and people can enjoy, uh, the night sky astro tourism, uh, is a big thing, people that, uh, do nighttime photography. Uh, and I think Morrell County is, uh, set with some beautiful southern, uh, county skies to take advantage of that. Um, experiential travel itineraries, when I put those together, they're put in, in, obviously to the publications and, uh, submitted. Um, to other areas, um, tour and travel areas, um, that will, uh, utilize them and, and kind of help promote and develop. Um, so the farm trails agri-tourism, the producers database is something that we're working on, I started working on it. Um, a number of months back, uh, we're taking form on a, a regional level to. Put together these databases of value-added producers, um, mainly for produce and culinary aspects. To be able to get that information out to schools or, you know, whoever else, um, can utilize restaurants or whatever. To know, um, who they can purchase, um, local produce from, um. So Transit Lodging Tax Initiative we just discussed, that'll be set, and I'll, I'll, um, probably like to meet with you guys to. See if we want to move forward with it, uh, the tourism landing page within Morrell County website. Um, I've got kind of, uh, an outline developed for that. Uh, a Recreation Ready Grant is a trails development thing that is coming down from Travel Oregon. And, um, we're hoping regionally, we can get that put together by the end of the week. Um, gonna start a regional newsletter and then get ready for the Association of Counties serving up to East of Morrell County in twenty twenty-five. So, that's kind of where we're at with things.
Thank you.
I wasn't able to attend the A O C this year, but how did that go with, for twenty twenty-four?
It was wonderful, um, it was the most amount of people, uh, talking with Jan. She thought there was probably around three hundred and fifty people that attended this year, it has substantially grown since, um, COVID. Um, you know, uh, and we had, uh, great products that we had on our table. Representing, uh, both counties, uh. We had, um, enough product to last. An hour of the two-hour event, we just got wiped out, and it was beautiful. We had, we, um, you know, got to, um, showcase a lot of our small, value-added, um, farm trail. Uh, businesses that were on there and stuff, so, um, it wa- it was, it was a good event and a great experience. So, we did a basket, um, for the county, we've got a couple nights, you know, throughout the county for people to stay. We, um, had a dinner ticket and, um, I put in some, some stuff from the county and, and some books on Morrell County and information. And, uh, we did a drawing for that, so I could garner, um, outside, uh, information, uh, emails, phone numbers. Uh, for newsletters, so.
We, we pivoted from the, uh, Tater Talks and did scones from.
Rise and Shine Organics.
Yes, and they were a bit, yeah, yeah, got a lot of feedback on this.
Yeah, yeah.
So I guess what kind of caught my attention is, and I understand it's information and you're getting from somebody else, but. Have to admit, when they say that there's twenty million dollars worth of visitor spending in Morrell County, I almost made it hard to believe.
Yeah.
And, you know, actually where it's going to, and then I looked at the chart and they talk about earnings, six point three million dollars, you know, I guess when I think earnings, they. They're trying to project how much profit somebody is making, uh, I'm not sure how they. You know, so then I look at, and they talk about there's two hundred and sixty-eight thousand overnight visitors in the county. So I did the math, that's seven hundred and thirty-four visitors spending the night from outside the county and all county. There aren't that many motel rooms.
Well, that is also in-home stays, they consider people coming in to.
How do they? My aunt from Woodland, Washington stays at my house, how do they know that she stayed there?
Right.
I mean, so, I just, I have to admit, I take some of their numbers with a grain of salt because.
Right, well, and they, they also in their, in their reports say that it's estimated by their.
You know, I understand, just pass them.
Correct. Yeah, yeah. Yep, I'll send you the Dean Runyon report and you can kind of go see how it breaks down.
Sure.
Yeah.
So I also want to mention that our, our goal is to, to grow tourism within the county. And collaborating with the different departments that we have within the county, like parks and planning with the Heritage Trail. And then also getting information on the county's website, having better, um, access for information. And, um, doing a tourism portion, uh, on the website itself is really going to help us out. But also, just so you know, um, in order to make all this happen, we need funding. And so somehow we have to get that funding, and the, the lodging taxes would help with that. Um, we have a lot of people coming from the tri-cities that use the O H V park. So why not advertise with, um, within the tri-cities? We could do radio advertising, television advertising, we can even do additional advertising, um, within their, um, visitor. Um, guide that they have there, um, when I went to the A O C, I went and visited a gentleman that owns a sauna company. And, um, because we're thinking about building a sauna out at the O H V park to provide an additional amenity out there. And he had never heard of Morrell County, and never heard of the O H V park, and he and his family are avid, um, A T V writers. And when I was first talking to him, he was, he kept telling me, there's no way in the world I'm going to go out to the O H V park in, in Morrell County. By the time we were done conversing, he said, you know what, I think I'm going to go visit your O H V park. Um, because I, I talked about the park itself, what we have, the amenities, um, I mentioned that it was part of the Dark Skies. Um, program, um, and that, um, it's just a great place to come and visit. But if they don't know about the O H V park and they live in Oregon, then there's something that we're not doing. Uh, we need to get the information out, not just to people that are close to us, but people that are within eastern part of Oregon. Or western part of Oregon, excuse me, and so, but in order to do that, we have to have the funding to do that. We have to advertise, and, um, that's all part of future plans, but we need support to do that.
When you talk about a trans, or, uh, uh, tax, you, which businesses are you going to tax? Have you identified the names of the?
A T L T is your lodging tax, so when you go stay a, a, at, you know, at a hotel somewhere, you're paying.
I'm talking about in Morrell County.
Yeah, it would be your lodging properties.
Okay, like, uh, I mean, names of businesses, was it three of?
So because I, there's, because they're a short-term thing and they offer a service, I'm not, I, I'm not sure. I have to dive a little deeper on how it, it would affect them, uh, but people that have Airbnbs, which, you know, there's. Just a few within Morrell County, um, but it's, it's, it's not a tax on your local. Public, on your communities, on your people that live here, it's a tax that you pay when you travel somewhere. If you travel to Kennewick or to Bozeman or to Seattle, you're paying, um, a, a transit lodging tax. First off statewide, depending on the state, second off, if the community has one, most communities have, um, a T L T as it is. And they're still held by the Oregon Legislative, uh, statutes, uh, on how that money is to be used. So that's also, um. Sometimes people have what's called a, a, a tourism, um, assessment tax. Um, and that is something like if you're building, like, what, um, Yumitila County did or Hermiston, they. Um, you know, there was a fifty cent or a dollar or two dollar a night, uh, traveled Pendleton, you know, charges another dollar. So when you stay at the hotels, this is a tax that travelers that are coming through pay. So you can set it up as a T L T, or you can set it up as a tourism assessment tax, or?
No, I understand how it works, and it's not the business that pays it, but you do tell them they have to collect it.
They do, yes.
Pay you, or whoever, the county, whoever handles it, so they. And anybody that's been in business before knows what it's like to collect taxes, because they collect them for the state, you know. You know, all kinds of stuff, and if, you know, if you live in a state with sales tax, they have to do that, you know, it's all this, you know, work, so. Um, I would suggest is identify which businesses are going to have to collect this tax and get them in. And, and ask them what their opinion.
Right, and that's part of forming the committee, is that they.
About, okay, I mean, they have to see a direct benefit.
Right.
Uh, well, they don't have to, I think it's both, they're out there, but I would want to do that. I mean, if you're going to ask, uh, one of the bird hanging operations in South County to collect a tax.
Uh, I think. So they already collect the tax, it's through the state.
Yeah.
Well, this is an additional one, though.
Correct.
Okay, so if you're asking them to, okay, let's clarify, you're asking them to collect an additional tax to pay the county. I believe they should have input on it.
And so part of it, yes, they would have input, but also they would, um, and what Carrie was talking about is that we would. Hopefully set up some kind of, um, grant program where someone could apply for a grant, once we collected the tax. And they could use that money to help what, with, whatever needs they needed. They could do additional advertising, they could bolster their business somehow. So we could make, um, this grant be a, a wide-open grant, and they can use that grant for whatever purpose they, they wanted to. It's not something that, um, that we would just take and, and just pocket, we have to use that money for tourism purposes.
Okay, and I wasn't talking about the actual, yeah, I was just talking about the process that you do, that we use. To arrive at saying, okay, we're going to implement this, should include talking to the people who are going to collect that tax.
Absolutely.
Getting their opinion and telling them what the benefit is going to be, because that would be very important to me anyway, whether or not to move forward with this, because.
And part of that would be getting a committee together, and so we would have to get a committee together to, to see the feasibility of the tax. And then, um, and then once, if the tax is passed, if we're allowed to tax on, on overnight stays. Then, um, that same committee can help us figure out how to use that tax. that same committee can help us figure out how to use that tax.
Travel Pendleton is, um, their board, uh, Travel Pendleton operates solely off of the, uh, the transit lodging tax that's collected out of sixteen hotels in Pendleton. And most of their board is made up of the hoteliers.
Because, you know, I mean, like you, you talk about, well, the tax may benefit the O H V park. That doesn't help the person who's owns a bird farm. Because that person's going to a county facility and staying there, so you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, right. There's a lot of.
The, the direct benefit needs to be there between the people who collect it. I won't say pay it because we know.
Alright.
But they have, they have costs and responsibilities in collecting that. And they, I think.
Anybody that has a lodging property is held to a state mandate to collect them anyways. Your hoteliers collect it and pay it to the state. So.
This is an additional one.
Yeah. And, and it would work in the same pro- process.
We'll keep it for them.
A little bit.
Yeah, no, I, I'm not, I'm just saying that they need, the people that are going to do it need to have input on it.
Oh, without question.
Good.
Yeah. Yep. So that's all I got.
Thank you.
Thanks. Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, next up, Willa Creek Valley Economic Development Group. Up to Kim Foia.
Thank you.
Hi. I'm good. Thank you. Um, this is, uh, we're here for a report for Willa Creek Valley Economic Development Group. This is my, um, she's the administrator, uh, Katie Murray. Um, I just, uh, wanted to say that Willa Creek Valley Economic Development Group, we're going to go a little, oh, we have a, you know, I'm going to go a little off script, but we have some pictures, so I want to share them. Um, we take seriously the stewardship of the funding that we receive. And, um, how important these programs are on our, to our community. So you can skip that. Okay. Well, I'll just move ahead. So Willa Creek Valley receives funds from, um, CRES, Columbia River Enterprise Zone. And we break down our funding. At the beginning of the year, we go through and kind of roughly budget by motion, what funds are going to go into what programs. And our programs are housing, uh, seniors, business, and, um, daycare. Those are the things that we've targeted in our community that are important. And then also we have a, um, these are year round funding opportunities. And then we have a annual community grant program. So our housing program funds, housing or rehabilitation grant. Last year we, um, spent about a hundred and thirteen thousand. We pay a portion of, um, new, new per, home purchases or rental properties, non-owner occupied. We pay a portion of repairs or remodeling or anything that would improve the properties. And last year we invested a hundred and thirteen thousand and, um, for an impact of three hundred and seventy three thousand dollars of improvements. We also, um, do have a demo and utility extension for like a derelict property that is not rehabable. That we would help assist up to fifteen thousand dollars with the demolition of that property. And or if you have a lot and it doesn't have water or sewer, we'll pay for the utility extension. So, um, we spent twenty two thousand. That one, we don't have that many people that are tearing down properties, but, um, part of that is if you use that money, you have to do something with the lot within a year, either build on it or sell it for someone to do something with it. Can't make it a bigger yard. Um, we implemented a new program this year, which is, uh, new construction. And that's just to assist with people to get started because there is a gap in how much it costs to build something and how much it will be of value. So sometimes even funding is difficult. We pay twenty thousand dollars on approval of the grant. And then at the end of the project, we'll pay another twenty. And that's for if you're building a home or a contractor's building a home, so it can be spec or your own personal residence. This year, because it's new, we've only, we've just started it and we've had two properties apply and for total of twen- forty to start with. Um, our business investment is also another pro- program we have. And last year we invested over a hundred and twenty nine thousand. We cap it at twenty five. Is that correct? It's twenty five. Uh, and up to fifty percent, but twenty five thousand is max. And, um, the total value of investments for last year because of what we're matching was three hundred and seventy thousand. Um, we also have funding and assistance for new businesses that we help them with their planning. And, um, that's part of the new hub and innovation center. And we've had a, we've had several new businesses come and get help be, just to get started. It's kind of a kickstart for economic development in our community. Senior Services, this is a new one this year also. And, um, we, that's not a grant, I mean, that's not a, that's a, eh, a year round if there's a problem. And so last year, Senior Services, South Moro County Seniors Matter came to WICED and they wanted to start their meal program. They didn't have any way to get it kickstarted. And we gave them a initial funding of fifteen thousand dollars just to get them started. And they were very aggressive in going out and seeking funding. They didn't know how that program would go, but it I mean, it blew up. They have seventy people coming and they're offering all kinds of services to these seniors. And they took that fifteen thousand, which all we did was just give them the opportunity to rent the space and get started. But we didn't know. We thought that might be enough for food for the five people that would come. And, um, they took that and rolled that into a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in grants and donations. And they are so successful. And have had such an impact on our seniors in the community. It's just awesome. We also helped with the roof project at Willow Creek Valley or Willow Terrace. And St. Patrick's Senior Center, when their HVAC went out, we, um, gave them the down payment to start that program. And then they went out and got, um, additional funding to help pay it. And now I'm seeing on, uh, social media that that project's complete. So we're happy to help with these important, there's no money here for seniors. It's very difficult for them to have their programs. And so we're happy to help them at least get kickstarted. And then Katie and I go back in and help them with their grant writing and leveraging funds to get the programs going. So, um, so there's been an important investment here. Um, childcare services, uh, we helped them with a, we committed two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to get them started with their capital investment program for the new childcare facility. And that money aided Hepner daycare to successfully seek additional funding totaling, um, over eight hundred or nine hundred thousand dollars. So they could start the project. They're just having real difficult time, as you guys are aware, finding a building site. So as soon as they get that done, then they can start their project. Um, in addition to our top priorities, um, we help fund community groups. Last year, nonprofits, uh, uh, special districts, municipalities. Last year we gave two hundred and sixty thousand dollars, which brought improvements in these programs and capital projects for over eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, um, WICED, let's see where I'm going to get to that. Oh, Moro County. Moro County supports WICED financially and with administrative funding. These funds are used to support the chamber. They allowed a recent revamp of the chamber model. And you may have noticed several new programs coming from the chamber, business trainings, other collaborations, and the newest being Market Eighty Seven. The Hepner Chamber Commerce renovated the old Chamber office on Main Street to an artisan mercantile, now home to over thirty entrepreneurs who do not have a place to sell their projects. This project has generated, it, this says four thousand in the first month, but year to date, nine thousand dollars. And they started the middle of October for local artisans. And, um, so this, uh, WICED funded the initial part of the renovation and then Katie working with, uh, reinventing rural and other entities in the state, other nonprofits, um, rolled that into an eighty thousand dollar, uh, grant from, what, who's that from?
Uh, Business Oregon.
Business Oregon. And that money is helping to fund the staffing and the improvements at this. And, um, so this has had a huge economic impact on our downtown. This is a main street business. And it's, uh, operated, what, what are the hours down there?
Um, we're open Wednesday through Saturday, ten to three. So pretty good and regular. So folks can expect it.
And you go in there and it's crowded. If you have not been to this, uh, Market Eighty Seven, you should. It's called Market Eighty Seven because Hepner was established in eighty seven. So nineteen, eighteen eighty seven. So. Anyway, this has been, this has been part of the chamber really spinning off and doing great things. Cause they had kind of stagnated. And last year, Moro County supported WICED, so they could in turn help fund a new staff person, Madison Rosenbaum, who's aggressive and going out in the community and getting things going. So, um, also, WICED has, is managing new construction projects. In addition to the three townhouse duplexes that we built, we are going to, we're preparing to build, uh, two one thousand square foot, one level, um, accessible homes for senior housing. We're starting with steps. I know that's, but these houses are easily rampable. It's for the future handicap accessibility. Currently, the people that we're targeting will be people that should be able to get up the stairs. And, um, it, the idea is that we were approached by several senior citizens that don't have housing available. They have money and they live in large family homes, but now they're widows or widowers. And, um, they would like to downsize, but they don't have the tenacity to take on a project like this. And they are difficult. There's a lot of steps in capital construction. So we're going to build these two homes downtown. It's right where this Hepner, uh, behind Dollar General and those lots along the creek. And, um, so they'll be able to walk to the store. They'll be able to walk to the post office. They, the, and then they can sell their homes. And that opens up two family homes for people look, because we have a lot of people looking for housing. We feel like this might be a step for, to assist with that. And so, um, the next thing is our strategic planning. La- a couple weeks ago, we had a strategic planning session. And, um, we had a, we had a great turnout for it. We were really, uh, pleased about it. Um, we took away from it that the people would like us to continue our current incentive programs, which are the housing and seniors and daycare and business. And, um, also continue with the new construction plans, um, that we would continue to support the city of Hepner with their utility extension, so that we can begin to develop the Robins, the twenty two acres up here, the Robinson property. And that we would increase and enhance our business support and resource development. We have the, we've opened our new, this picture in the middle, uh, in- innovation hub on Willow Street. And, um, that, that would be a community resource for business. And we have, we have a staff with people that can help businesses that want to come in and get assistance. We have an extra office space. If people need to use that to meet with clients, um, that we will continue to support childcare, um, development. And that, um, the senior citizens services. And a couple of things that we need to do is figure out how to outreach our programs. There are people that are not aware of what we're doing. That's, we've, we're on social media. We work through the chamber. We don't, we've kind of hit a roadblock there. We're going to work on that. That's going to be something we'll target is now we have these programs. How do people know about them? And, um, also, we have a couple of new housing projects we're going to look at. One is maybe a, uh, investment in mortgage buy downs for interest rates. So that if you're buying a home, because that's sort of a hindrance for people purchasing housing now, is that they can't, they don't want to take a loan out at the interest rates. And those, there are programs in mortgage that you can buy down that. And maybe we assist with that. So just to get people into the mortgages and buying properties again. And, um, so I, we have a lot of work to do, but we have a great crew to do it. And, um, I want to say that last year, CRES two funding has had an incredible impact. Twenty twenty four, they awarded WICED five hundred and seventy nine thousand, three hundred and, five hundred and thirty seven, three hundred and fifty seven dollars. And we invested over five hundred and seventy five thousand dollars directly back into our community. So, um, a lot of hardworking people on this team that care a lot about our communities. Here's our leadership. There, it's made up of a very diverse amount group of people in our community, bankers, uh, city leaders and county leaders, health district people. Um, so I appreciate the support of Moro County. And I just wanted to let you know what we're doing with what you're doing.
I'd just like to make a comment. In my mind, this is exactly how uh, the CRES two money is spoken with, they wanted to handle. They've said consistently over the years, twelve years or whatever, they don't want to have individual asks. But they wanted to grant the money locally because the local people know the needs. You track the money, you filter out the scams, so to speak, you know? So this is working to me as a, as a real template to how that money is distributed, CRES money is distributed around the county and put to really good use.
Well, thank you.
Yeah.
We have a good, we have a lot of volunteers that work really hard and have the ability to take the time to do this. It's, it's, it's been really great having, um, the funding to do these programs and help people. Sure.
You could point out, uh, I really enjoy sitting on their work, but also being involved in their strategic, uh, session down there, the, at that Willow Street, uh, area. That's really turned into a nice space, has a nice area that I'm sure would be made available to local groups for meetings and such. And it's just a nice little, it's kind of Gillen Bisbee on a smaller, more intimate scale. It's very nice. If you haven't been by it, it's, it's worth checking out.
It is. It turned into a beautiful space and it is available to the public for use. The same, same model as we have with the Gillen Bisbee. If you're a local nonprofit or municipality, it's cleaning fees only. If, if you're having an event, then we charge a normal rental fee. So it is good for, um, the chamber uses it. A lot of people, but we, we have to, we can't lose money on it. So we charge cleaning fees, which are nominal. So it has been a beautiful space. And there's usually somebody there during workouts if you want to come by and take a look at it.
Yeah, happy to give a tour.
It's really cool. Well, thank you very much for the opportunity to present. Appreciate it. Thank you, David. For chair.
Okay. Consideration of the county tax policy.
Morning. Okay, um, so after we had an incident, um, with a cyber phishing, a successful, uh, cyber phishing, uh, we revealed that we didn't really have a process, um, to report theft or loss, um, of county resources. And so we were instructed to develop a, uh, policy. And this was, um, kind of a team effort, uh, with council. But, um, we did develop a theft or loss of county property policy, which, um, its purpose was to provide a clear process for reporting theft or loss. And it outlines the steps to be taken, um, to ensure that there's documentation and timely action. So the parts of the policies, um, that it outlines is, uh, reporting procedures um, for employees and supervisors. So who the employee tells, um, what the supervisor does when they receive the report, um, the information provided in the report. If a, uh, police report is necessary. And then, um, it outlines the steps in the investigation and the follow up. And if there's any corrective action to be taken. Um, and then at the end of the policy, we do have our, our contacts listed. Um, and there is one thing that you might see in the policy that we, um, council suggested, we create a, a standardized form to, um, report incidences on. Um, and that would probably be something that, um, myself or the, uh, risk, future risk manager, um, myself or the, uh, risk, future risk manager, um, develops. Are, are there any questions on that policy?
No, I like the idea of, um, having the standardized form and everybody knows what they have to report. Get this same information every time. Nothing's left out.
Um, this seems to be, to me, I mean, I, it looks good, but it seems to me to be focused on property.
So it's, um, it's loft, loss or theft. So loss is defined in the policy as, um, sorry, let me get back up to that. The misplacement or accidental disappearance of property, um, including damage of beyond repair. So basically, it can be intellectual property, it can be electronic, anything, um, stored on the electronic database.
If I, I would like to see it address monetary theft from the county.
Uh huh.
Specifically in cyber theft, embezzlement. Uh, and also, one other thing is, I think Jeff was talking about this earlier, is if we get some ransomware on our computer, I think the staff should have a clear policy on that, how, exactly if it was theft, even though they haven't determined that anything's, the appropriate authorities should be notified immediately or however, however the policy works. But, but I think it should address, like I said, if, if it's discovered that there's money missing from a county bank account, and nobody knows what it is, that should be included specifically, I think. Not, you see what I'm saying, monetary loss, embezzlement, and a hacking incident.
Okay, yeah, it was, um, it was the intention of the policy to cover, um, that sort of loss as well. Um, so I can work with council if you'd like to see, um, if we need to outline it a little bit further.
That's what I was thinking.
Okay. We can do that.
So maybe it's more spelling out cash, David.
Yeah.
Because under the definition, say, this county property says any asset, which to me means cash, you know? Because it's an asset on the balance sheet, so it's.
And it says controlled by the county too, so it could be data, um.
Yeah, well, yeah, I mean, even though, you know, we went to AOC and we heard stories, it's horrendous. Four stories of the county's getting ransomware. So is that considered theft, you know, it, I mean, you know? I, I think this is a good time to just roll that in. I mean, why not? I mean, it's equivalent to.
Is, is the ERP gonna cover some of that? Just question.
Um, no.
Um, ERP, you know, but, um, potentially in the IT disaster recovery and business continuity plan, um, they'll actually be giving a presentation, a couple of, a couple of, uh, business items here, so.
Great. I was, one reading through the, that documentation, I seen there was stuff in there about it, so. That, I, I mean redundancy is good, we also don't want to have the same thing over and over, if it's already been covered, so.
Kevin, you know if there's any state or federal policies on, uh, say state or federal grant money, this is our ransom, they're stolen. You know, is there special reporting, uh, policy on that?
Uh, definitely yes, um, but varied by agency. Um, you know, there's, there's specific reporting requirements that, that have to be, and it's usually a report to the, uh, grant administrative, grant administrator for that particular program or that, that agency. Um, I'd have to, to get you more details, uh, I'd have to do a little bit of looking, but it's in, it's certainly in all of our federal funding, uh, grant agreements. Or grant administration rules or guides.
So I, I do believe, um, that the policy that was presented today does include, um, data or cash. Uh, but if you would like me to edit it, um, or consult with council again, then I'd be happy to do that. Okay.
Uh, data, cash, yeah, I guess embezzlement. I mean, you find out that's cashes.
Yeah.
That's what you're asking, asking the county, who knows?
Okay.
Probably just spell it out.
Yeah.
I, I don't see.
We can do that.
Harmful about spelling it out. I mean, just add some word change.
Yeah.
Yeah, although I don't, I don't want to make it subjective where if, uh, somebody thinks it's on purpose. I don't know, just getting all the track, yeah, okay.
Maybe they say, well, cash wasn't said, money wasn't specifically said, I guess, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions?
No, I mean, it's, right, thank you very much.
I'm, I think I'm up again.
Yes.
If you don't mind, I'll say, okay. Um, okay, so what you have in front of you is an update, um, to the county's bereavement policy. It's our, uh, just general bereavement policy. Um, we had updated to comply with changes, um, legal changes. Um, so one of the things in OFLA that was changed in, in the last year, so, was, um, the definition of family member. And that came out when, um, the paid leave came out. So it was, it was almost exactly a year ago. Um, so just updating that to comply with, um, the legal definition. And then also, um, just kind of outlining the paid bereavement leave, the county time that they provide for bereavement leave. Um, so added in there that the employee must be employed for at least thirty days, cause that's what, um, sick leave is under the law. Um, and then that part-time employees will receive a priority amount. So if they're, it's intended to give you, um, a week of paid leave on the county, um, if you experience a loss. So if you're scheduled for sixteen hours a week, then, um, the county pays the sixteen hours if you wanted that off instead of the full forty. Um, so just making those changes and then updating again the, um, who qualifies as an immediate family member based on the changes in the Oregon law.
Well, your, 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 you know, I don't have any questions.
Okay.
I'm confused by affinity.
Yeah.
I guess that's a, something you would make a judgment call on this.
Yeah, um, yeah, exactly. It would be somebody that, uh, we could deem as qualifies as, um, somebody that the employee considers as an immediate family member. Like, maybe they had.
That for that, that's, that's what I'm giving it, isn't it?
Yeah, well, actually, um, in the.
If it's, if it's a dog they're using as a service dog because they have PTSD.
Yeah, I don't know about service dogs, but I do know that, um, in legal cases, they have shown that it has to be a person. Um, because originally that was everyone's concern that it would include, it could include anything. Uh, but it does say person, um, in the case law. And then, yeah. And then it would be, you know, it, it, they might have to provide proof of the affinity connection. So, you know, maybe it's my uncle that raised me. Or, um, maybe I have legal guardianship over these children, but I haven't actually adopted them, that type of thing, be covered.
Maybe it's basically something language that the state or somebody says you have to.
Um, yes, so we do have to have it under the OFLA section, the protected leave. Um, but we do not necessarily have to have it under the paid bereavement leave by the county. But just mirror those.
Making it the same.
Mm-hmm.
So I will move to a proven adopt to nemesis to county's bereavement policy.
I'll hear a second.
I'll second.
You do in a second, uh, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Questionary.
Thank you.
Thank you. You've been, so there's disaster recovery and business continuity plan project update, Kevin.
Morning again. Evidence, finance director. Um, we have, uh, also Erin Prokasek from Barry Dunn, uh, who's gonna be, I'll give an intro here, um, but she's gonna have some, uh, slides to present and talk through as well. So, um, uh, just some backgrounds and, uh, the audit for fiscal year ending June thirty, twenty twenty-three. There was a, a material weakness identified and reported, uh, by our audit firm. Um, and that had to do with the lack of a, uh, information, uh, disaster recovery and business continuity plan. And, uh, following that finding and the issuance of the final report, um, the board, um, gave the go-ahead to, uh, move forward with the project to develop that plan. And we engaged with Barry Dunn, um, consulting firm that I've been using a lot, utilizing for, um, IT-related projects. Um, to, uh, lend their expertise and, and help develop that. So there were three phases, uh, to that project, uh, project planning. Um, second phase, uh, business impact analysis, uh, where they identify, uh, impacts of a major disaster. Um, and the, uh, you know, the operational impacts that, that, uh, uh, would affect the county from a, from a technology perspective. Uh, and then the development, um, of the final, uh, business continuity and disaster recovery strategy and plan. So where we're at today, we have finalized phase two of, of this, uh, project. And wanted to, uh, provide that update to the board. Um, and that has, uh, the business impact analysis is actually a document that's attached to this agenda item. Um, and, uh, Erin from, uh, Barry Dunn is with us. And she's gonna go through a, a high-level summary of what we've done, um, and the activities surrounding this project to date, um, as well as a high-level summary of that business impacts analysis and next steps.
So with that. I've done muted her and she can start her screen and share.
Are you able to, okay?
Yeah.
Great. Just wanted to make sure. Now can you see my screen? Okay.
Yes.
All right. Um, thanks for the introduction, Kevin. Um, just a brief presentation I have for you today. Um, oh. Well, this is what happens when you're on a laptop and it decides, there we go. So just brief introduction, introduct, uh, uh, agenda, I'm sorry. So brief introduction of Barry Dunn and the, the folks that have, have worked with us, um, on this engagement. The work that we performed and the business impact analysis. And as Kevin says, the report is attached to the agenda. And so I'll just cover some key themes that were found in that business impact analysis and, um, some next steps. So, um, Kevin Entz was the county pro, or is the project county, the goodness, county project manager, um, for this project. And Jordan Stanley, the city of Hermiston IT director, um, is the technical lead, so working with us. Um, my name is Erin Provazik and I'm the project manager for this engagement to help the county, uh, build a business continuity and disaster recovery plan. Um, I will say that, that the plan is focused primarily on technology capabilities and the continuity of those, um, technology operations, um, in the event of, of an incident or a disaster. So, um, just like Kevin said, that, uh, in the first phase, we just did some project planning to identify who we'll be meeting with, when, um, kind of establish a schedule. And then we got into phase two, which is the business impact analysis. And so we started out with some discovery meetings and we met with county departments. That was in August and we discussed, you know, what, what each county department uses to, technology-wise, to perform their business functions. And what would it look like if you didn't have that technology? So no matter what the disaster is or what the incident is, how is that going to affect your operations? So we went into some detail with each of the departments on that. And, um, coming out of those discovery meetings, we built the, or we developed the business impact analysis report. So, um, we, we identified current strengths and challenges that we found with the use of technology and the infrastructure that provides the technology to, to those business units. Um, we identified some areas of risk, um, that, uh, potential technology disruption would, um, could, could cause issue with the, the services provided to your constituents. And, um, with some of those challenges that we identified, we, we itemized some recommendations for improvement, um, that will essentially flow into the business continuity and disaster recovery plan because you're, you're really not, um, gonna be positioned um, in a great place, um, to, to recover from a disaster if some of these, these things aren't, um, executed, some of those recommendations. So the key themes that came out of the report, um, the strengths and areas of risk, the, the, the strengths primarily is that, um, you know, one, you've got emergency purchasing authority through the state, um, or I say one, that's two. That, I think that, that in many organizations, that, that's a big thing. You have the ability to, to make purchases, um, of services or technology commodities when needed. Um, there's a strong data backup approach. Um, the, the city of Hermiston IT department has great knowledge sharing as they're supporting the county for your, for your IT, um, infrastructure and, and other needs. Um, the existence of backup workstations, so the event of a disaster, um, and workstations are not available, whether it be a flood or a fire. Um, the city of Hermiston has, um, available backup workstations, not to replace every workstation um, in the county, but depending on the impacted areas, um, there are some, some workstations that, that can be used. Um, we did identify a number of risks and, uh, one of, a couple of those risks have to do with the city of Hermiston's IT department, um, and, and as it's supporting the county. And some of it is that there's minimal documentation about the operations and support of, of the county's uh, technology infrastructure. Um, also, the intergovernmental agreement between the county and the city is a little vague. Um, it's pretty high level. Um, it, don't get me wrong, it's, it's been working and, um, it's definitely serving its purpose. I think the city of Hermiston is doing, um, a, a, a great job of, of, um, if you will, um, inferring their responsibilities. They take their responsibilities, um, seriously and they, they do their best to support the county. And, um, so some of the things that are not even written in the intergovernmental agreement, um, they're doing because it's, it's best practice. So that is a great thing, but it's a risk because it is not stipulated, um, uh, pretty specifically about their requirements, any kind of service level agreements or, um, disaster recovery planning activities. Um, another decent key theme or areas or area of risk is, um, the network connection, the recovery speeds, um, the, the ability to recover a, a connection loss with the, the disparate locations and the, the internet connectivity. Um, if you were to lose one and it kind of falls into number eight there, single points of technology and connectivity failure. If you were to have a, an incident or a disaster at, um, one of the major county facilities that houses, um, a lot of the, the core infrastructure for your network, it could take down a lot of, of capability, technology capabilities within the departments because it's, um, reliant on the connection that's coming in there. Um, there are some backup, um, connectivity capabilities in, in some critical locations, but there, there are quite a few single points of technology and connectivity failure that, um, could have domino effects, if you will. Um, the location of data backup infrastructure, where, um, data is backed up with it all being in the same location, if that one. With it all being in the same location, if that one location were to um. Have some sort of incident that that made the building inoperable. Um completely total loss. Um there's a lot of the backups are stored there as well, so you're at risk of of data loss. Um we also identified independent department procurement processes and decentralized contract management and really that's about. Um having decentralized contract management where there's not, you know, that centralized oversight to make sure that certain key. Terms and conditions exist in every contract is important. What we found is that there are some contracts for um software. That is hosted by the vendor that um that don't clearly stipulate the vendor's responsibilities. For um disaster recovery or making sure that the data always remains available to the county. So e- essentially just losing uh internet access of by the county. Um that makes it so that you can't access that software, but. What happens when the vendor incurs some sort of incident or disaster and they lose the county's data? A lot of the contracts don't have terms and conditions in them. Um and in fact, we found one contract that specifically stated that they do not take any responsibility for the county's data. That they are hosting. So um that decentralized contract management and um and the ability. Abilities for departments to procure software on their own without that centralized oversight. Um and and input from a technology perspective um is is definitely an area of risk. There are some departments that rely on paper files quite a bit. Um. And that is a a pretty big risk when it comes to disaster recovery planning. Without those documents scanned um and accessible uh hosted in the cloud or backed up at a disparate location. Um we the the county's at risk for for losing critical operating documentation. And then um getting down to uh number nine, the lack of airport contingency plans. Um this is primarily just about, you know, some some of its power based. Um but the lights at the airport, things not working, not being uh backed up with. Additional power supplies or um additional internet connections. Um the our airport may not be able to allow uh lifelight or critical um flight operations. To 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 happen there. Um moving on, um so we we identified some recommendations for improvement that will. Essentially flow into the next phase of the project. So the the short term plans is. I- is that the city of Hermiston and the county have already begun um. Uh planning backup infrastructure and network upgrade projects. Those are underway and the sh- the short term, we we highly encourage. Those to continue on on schedule and uh be put in place to to help with um some. Network connectivity capabilities. It does not correct the the single points of failure in in many instances. Um I think that just the geography of of the county and the um. The multiple locations is is makes that a challenge, makes redundancy for network connectivity and. Um networking uh within within the county's internal network, definitely a challenge. Um but it's not a challenge that can't be overcome. Um we also, in the short term, really believe that uh process documentation should be developed. And in every department. So where there are um. Processes in place, they they know their processes, don't get me wrong. They these county staff are um well aware of of what they do every day. Very, very little of it is documented so that we find that when you document. Your processes, you really see how dependent you are on certain technologies and as you're documenting those processes. You um can come up with contingency plans. So in the event that this system is not available. How are you gonna continue providing your services to your constituent constituents? Um again, I don't I do not at all want to imply that that staff don't have an idea. They haven't thought about it. They have, it's just not documented. Long term, um we really recommend a formal technology procurement approval process. So that the right people with the right mindsets are reviewing any technology procurements. Ensuring that terms and conditions that protect the county from a disaster recovery and and. Uh continuity standpoint um are are addressed in those vendor contracts. Um and also implement a contract management process to ensure that um. That the the terms of those contracts are being followed, including, you know, annual reporting requirements and. Um other uh technology contract best practices. We also, long term, recommend expanding digitization of paper files. Um especially those that are considered critical to to operational uh business processes within the departments. We uh we also recommend redefining the intergovernmental agreement with the city of Hermiston to. Um more specifically identify the roles and responsibilities between the county and the city regarding. You know, protections and recommendations of best practices um. For for redundancy, but also um planning for. Uh recovery of technology operations in the event of of an incident or or failure or um any other disaster. Um we also recommend exploring contingency options for the county airport, which would definitely include. Power and um weather station backup capabilities and um. Also looking at alternate connectivity plans for critical locations and those would be those core buildings. Um throughout the county that um that kind of that that provide a hub of of connectivity. So that uh the the folks housed in those locations can continue their operations, even if one building forty miles away. Um is is not operational. So those are those recommendations that came out of that business impact analysis report. Um so the next steps in the project is that we'll develop um a technology, business continuity and disaster recovery. Strategy plan that will include governance of of, you know, the establishment of. Of a disaster. So roles and responsibilities, procedures, defining what a disaster is and who's in charge. Um those those things are are important so that it's it's always clear. Um and you're not trying to figure that out in the event um of a disaster or incident. Um we identify critical technology and services um as identified by county staff. But also um identified by the county administrator as far as, you know, critical operations of the county. We would uh will report on recovery point objectives and recovery time objectives and recovery point objectives are primarily. Around essentially how much data can you lose? Um if if uh if you're if data is getting backed up. Once a day, um the the smallest or the shortest recovery point objective is. Twenty-four hours or can you can you lose twenty-four hours worth of data? If that's not the case, then we point those out and um and of course put recommendations for. Uh a revised backup strategy. And then recovery time objectives is how long could you be without that technology? Um and then also restore restoration prioritization. So based on some key components identified. By the county and ca- key components, I apologize. Key business functions or or, you know, services provided by the county and and that's um, you know, health. Um public safety and and streets that those those are the three top priorities that the county administrator. Identified. So of course, the technology supporting those functions would be top priority. And we'll we'll lay all of those priorities out in that um plan. And then, of course, a great uh business continuity and disaster recovery strategy plan. Is is gonna have components related to testing that plan, practicing it. Um making sure that folks in the county know what their roles and responsibilities are in an event. And that so that it's not a surprise and you're not pulling some document um off of a shelf. Um that that you haven't um practiced before. We're gonna continue those. In fact, we're we're working on that plan right now and um we really hope that. Uh Barry Dunn and the county will, we anticipate completion um by the end of January twenty twenty-five. And with that, that's the shortest update I could provide you. What kind of questions can I answer?
Once you get this done, when you run it by the auditor to make sure, I mean, everything, I mean, it looks very comprehensive, but. Since so the ones that are gonna grade us whether or not we have one. We ought to make sure it meets the requirements. Again, it it looks like it's very comprehensive, but.
Yeah, so I've um because it's not completed yet, um wasn't completed by the end of fiscal twenty-three and. Or I'm sorry, I know what year we're in, fiscal twenty-four, um and we're doing that audit right now. You know, like I was concerned, I didn't want another material weakness identified and um I don't wanna. Speak out of place, but um uh what we've done is we've discussed what we're what we're doing, shared information and. Just to show the auditors that we're addressing it and we'll have something in place shortly. So uh yeah, if they're gonna be, they're looped in, they've they're aware of what's. What we're doing and they've had a chance to look at information and.
So once it's finalized, you'll run it by the auditor before the audit to gain to make sure that it.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, it'll be one of the standard. Um it'll be one of the standard uh plans, policies that, you know, we'll provide to the auditors. One of the things that's that's unique about this type of a plan is that uh, you know, they they. We have to, it has to be tested. Um you know, Erin mentioned that that's a, you know, a kind of a best practice, but. Uh that is one of the one of the questions that was asked on on our audit is, you know, do we have it and is it regularly tested? And is that testing documented? Um so that's the other part of that. So we'll have to uh incorporate that process um. But um I don't anticipate, other than finding the time, any challenges with that.
Well, just I I'm thinking you gave us somewhat of a timeline for the deliverable four and five. So we're kind of done with four and five is gonna be the final strategy plan, which she's assuming will be January twenty-five.
And then um I just would note on the risks that are identified, I just want to clarify. Yeah, we can't have all that addressed by January twenty-five. So um that's gonna be. We'll use that and I'll work with Jordan to uh develop projects that. Uh reasonable reasonable projects that would reasonably address and mitigate the those risks that are identified and. And those will be, you know, brought to the board, you know, for consideration when budgeting and and that whole process. So. Um there'll be there'll be work related to this and I don't and addressing those risks, you know, likely for some time to come.
So on the I G A, I know a lot of times we just kind of use the standard I G A from Indianapolis County. I'm assuming that that's kind of where we are and we probably need to upgrade to our own specific I G A.
Yeah, well, my understanding is the and and Jordan could probably provide some more background on this. Um the the move from I I M E S D to the Hermiston City of Hermiston I T Services happened in a very. Uh compressed period of time and and it was a a more of a, let's get something on paper um so that we can complete this move. Um and that's something that we we have, like this Jordan's been, you know, block step in involved in this project. So. Um we can certainly circle back around on and and uh develop that more fully.
Thank you, Kevin.
Alright, thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
Okay, next up would be a final discussion on the twenty twenty point national hazard mitigation plan.
Yes, um based from our presentation at the uh in November. Commission asked us to do one more review of that. Um I committed myself and the emergency manager Steve Freeland to to go through that. We've uh we've reviewed it. There is one uh final point of change that. Uh Commissioner Wenhols reached out to me on and that's on page forty-four, the natural hazard mitigation plan update. We uh I retained the uh um figure nine, Marl County Amazon data centers. And the direction was to kind of make it agnostic and just uh count data centers because we uh. Do have other data centers than Amazon. I left that table in there. Um I would just ask that um. We we removed that to keep it agnostic uh since we didn't do a map that showed all the ones that are out there. And so that's the only thing that we would we would change. Uh outside of that, we would uh ask for word of admissioners. Consideration and on resolution twenty uh twenty-four, twenty-nine uh to replace this uh. Allow us to adopt adopt this updated natural hazard mitigation plan. And uh proceed with distributing it to the different municipalities for their adoption as well.
Any questions?
No, it's um just, I guess, to address the figure nine, oh, it's a map that shows. Location and it spells out A W S data center. So just if we're gonna show data centers, we need to show all of them, but I don't know. The relevance or why it needs to be there for hazard mitigation plan, why we need to show the location of any of the data centers. But if we pull that figure out, um we'll have to go through and just make some clerical changes, we uh reschedule the tables. Uh but I think we can do that, get that submitted out to municipalities without pulling it back to B O C.
That'd be part of the motion that somebody makes.
Yeah, and so I'll be, I think, but there's actually a resolution. Yes. If you'd like to uh do a motion to amend the plan, to remove that, and then we can just do the resolution. Saying as of in December.
Okay, so I'll make the motion to uh amend the.
Hazard mitigation plan, removing figure nine and then renumbering figure six to false. All set then.
Move and second today for the discussion. On the favor.
Hi, hi.
Alright, enclosed question three. Okay, they're here, a motion deal.
So move with amendments. Senate.
Up is the water consortium I G A review.
So this is the um intergovernmental agreement uh uh finalizing the formation of a water consortium. For the our clean water cons- uh consortium to deal with the nitrate issues in residential uh wells. In the Loquama i- impacted area. Um the consortium uh, the commission's been able to look through and review. Establishes an agreement with the Port of Marl to provide uh one elected official, one staff member to be on the boards. And would allow us to reach out to impacted cities to uh to have representation on the advisory board. Uh but this establishes a four-member panel to kind of make sure the governance and then the advisory committee would. Uh be there to help work through the uh projects. The commitment for the county is sixty thousand dollars a year. Uh Chair Sykes uh worked uh very closely on the development list, appreciate the effort he's done. Uh taking this as kind of a banner item for him and uh we're now uh to the point where the port has agreed to it. We've made. Some changes to it uh to to make sure things are good, but that has been reviewed by our council and we're bringing for the. mission for review and adoption so that we can then form the form the consortium and get started work on that as as a partnership looking forward.
Port has this on their agenda today. I told you, they're ready to move on also. You proved it today. Valerie's going to send it, is he have all three or just one?
It just has one signature for the county and one for the pork.
Okay, so she went, she'll do, she'll, she'll. I asked her how we could get it too, because I was, I was hoping to get the port and they wanted to to get an identical signed copy of this for their, for their consideration, they're gonna need it so one thirty. So Valerie's going to send it to the DocuSign, also an initial forward to the port.
What the port do you want to sign? Would it be?
Who?
Yeah, would it be Joe?
Well, we'll let them decide. Because the chair. We'll let the port.
Okay. Any discussion of this?
Just when talking about it. Select it as a as a groundwater management area, we need to be careful not to do that. Because it's inclusive, give it to the county. So we need to separate Morrow's, Morrow County's groundwater area versus just the groundwater management area, so we don't have that.
Additional.
Additional burden, yeah, for the county.
Thank you. Yes, I would say it's with the Morrow County portion of the area that's very dozen.
We should be clear on that.
Thank you.
I'll move to approve the intergovernmental agreements tomorrow, coming to the Port of Marl for the water consortium authorization, Chair Sykes to sign. All second.
With the second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Okay, thank you. Uh, next up would be the appointment of the water consulting committee members. I would like to see and recommend that myself and Tamara be appointed as a uh, because as you see, there's one staff member, one faculty. So I would ask that myself and Tamara be appointed to this committee.
I'll make a motion to appoint Commissioner Data Sykes and Cameron Mambet as members of the clean water consortium board. Second.
Move and second, any further discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, all opposed, motion carried. Okay. Thank you very much. My fellow five minutes. Paul, remember the national information of the water department reports to discover the state's general report on the Childers.
Hello, and um, nice to see you all. As you know, I haven't been here for a while. I just gave you a kind of a brief what's been going on in my office. So, yeah, we had the the May primary and then a hand count and then we had the poll for the the recall. And then I turned around and had the November and we had a Association of County Clerks Conference in between that and we had this general election and then got it done, was the only one working on Friday because, you know, everybody needs a break. Had the bomb threat at four fifty nine, so it was like, really? Really?
What else you got?
So, and you know, it was one of those things that were, it it basically was every county in the state at the election office. Some of them had they have left early, so they they didn't really get bothered with it. But I called the state and they were like, yeah, you better take it seriously. So anyway, that that happened and during this election, we had the D M V. We made, you know, the counties all made the news that we had twelve hundred and twenty nine non-citizens getting ballots. So that was a meeting we had to have and I I had twelve and then a couple of weeks later, after the ballots had mailed, we got another bunch and I had another one, but none of the thirteen people I had had ever voted. And that that was on the D M V, it was not on the the non-citizens because they didn't ask, you know, they go into D M V, they register, they they get their driver's license. And none of them, so when they got a ballot in the mail, I'm sure knowing that if they vote and they're not a citizen, that is a swift line to non-citizenship. So the ones that had voted, they found in the, through the state, a lot of those were citizens. So it wasn't, it it's just a lot of smoke and mirrors. And as you know, they they're gonna make everything look really good. And then our registration is up, our voter turnout is low. The state was seventy four percent and Morrow County was sixty five point five six and I certified on the twenty seventh, the last day for challenges was the twenty sixth. I had seventy two challenges this this election saying, you know, hey, your signature didn't match or, you know, you forgot to sign it. Of those seventy two fifty four weren't resolved, so those people got reject letters and those ballots didn't count. And so I look at our percentages as somewhat our our workforce. So if you look at Umatilla County, they're next to us, same, they're lower, they're lower than I am. You look to Walawa Union, they're high, but they don't have the workforce like we. You go to Malheur, they're like us, they're low. You go to Jefferson County, they're low also and you look at the shoots and those are higher, but most of the workforce live in those places. So they're they're people that move, they're they're fluent and we we get quite a bit of that. I just been kind of trying to figure out why. And and I think that's a lot of it. And lack of really caring, but you know, they should. So our, my indexes are online now. So if somebody was looking at records, they can look at our indexes, which are if I create it, it's online. The images are not. There's, they're so easy, easy to manipulate. I'm not real okay with that, but if you want to buy an image, then you can go in and get it and pay for it and we know you have it. So I like a really smart person have that go live during the election. So then we had, we were just inundated with questions. So that was smart on my part. But we also with that, I have a property alert piece that I purchased. So now people, if they call, they they go on and they put their name in, they can get a if anything records in my records on their name or their property, they can get notified from our system that, hey, is it, did, did you do this? So it it's something I I I feel is responsible on my part.
Have have we seen an increase in that type of fraud in our county so much?
Not that I know of. That's one of those, you know, sometimes things happen and you 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 don't know, you know, they have to be notarized, but you know, hey, a notary can be dishonest. So, but you know, you still, you make sure it goes through all those things that it has to have. So, you know, if I saw something that came in that was, yeah, I can't really say I'm not gonna record it, but I sure will reach out. That was something that that was offered, so I added it, it was like five hundred dollars to add on to my suite that I already used, so I thought it was a good idea. We recorded our records we put in this last year, thirty four hundred, thirty four fifty two new documents. And so anyway, that's all rest. Any question, Nae?
No, I'd like to hear.
Can I ask you a few questions? With your online records, so you don't have the images on it, but is it is it transcribed into just text or you just let them know they have it?
They're indexed. So so if you look at me, so you go on and yeah, look at Bobby Childers, you'd see any document I've ever had created under me will be there. So then you can click on it, it'll tell you how much you paid for it, who the grantor was, who the grantee was. Now, the image there with my signature and all the pertinent little weirdnesses isn't. So if you want that, you will, you will go online and you'll pay the the fifty cents to the folks and that image will upload to you. And then I know who has it.
See.
And hopefully it'll help, it'll help like with surveys and stuff, then they can, they can find that document and then they can always come in and and print it out for a quarter page. So.
Well, I like the idea that, you know, you're doing things that helps the people self-serve themselves and do it on the schedule that's giving to them. It's another level for any.
And and these will be going to the title companies, but they have a little different securities measure on that, their backsides than than the norm.
So.
And they will pay for it.
Good morning, Commissioners. Want to introduce you to our new Deputy Public Works Director Rory Rolet.
Rory comes to us, been in construction his whole career, last ten years, has been privately owned subcontractor specializing in utility underground work. Always has also worked in roads and constructions of all sorts. So he he brings a lot of experience to the county.
Thank you.
For the month of November, we've had lots of, I think we reported this in October too, we've had a lot of good moisture around the county, so we've gotten a lot of blading done on the gravel roads and add in rock where needed. Most of the routes are are finished up with the exception in the mountains. Luke's still working up there and there's another section that's probably gonna be done next week, so we've had really good success with with roadblading this year.
I spent some time up there and appreciated the nice roads. Been a long time since I've gone down some of those roads and not broke it too, so.
I'll pass that on to the operator.
They were in really good shape. And a lot of them, sure, because of the logging that was done, they had to go extra work, but.
That too.
Yeah, but no, it was very nice.
Glad to hear that. Well, we're still always working on signs around the county, replacing signs. I do want to report because we've been talking about it, our, one of our administrative assistants, Kirsty, she didn't the legwork on intermediate procurement for a pretty substantial order on the finger signs we've been talking about, the road, the road name signs, kind of breaking it up into two projects, because I really wasn't sure how expensive it was gonna be. So so the 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 first quotes that came back were just to replace finger signs that are missing. They'll also include construction signs that we need and some other things, but the the low bid came in under fifteen thousand, which surprised me a lot. So we'll we'll get approval on this purchase, put together, pack it and send it on to finance. Yeah, before we award anybody. And then when we get through this, we'll do it again for replacing signs that are just defaced and just really old and need replaced. So doing it in a two-face project. We're still Ben in November cleaning up cattle guards. We've done a lot of them and cleaning culverts. We have switched at this point and we're in December now, we'll report on it next month, but we stopped on the cattle guard repair and have moved on to another project, but we do have a couple of guys still out cleaning culverts. And we'll, we'll do that through December. We'll do that as long as we can. As long as there's nothing to plow. And still doing some pothole repair. We got some cold mix at the shop so we can continue, I should say, pothole patch materials, not cold mix, but just material that's that we need for filling potholes during the winter time. And all our equipment's set up for plowing. Everything's ready to go. We're out today, actually, there was some black ice out there on Island Boardman and some other spots. We've been out sanding this morning. For airport, go ahead.
I did see some liquid applications as well, and I'm assuming on the hills you're using liquid application?
Yes, we actually have, we we haven't applied it in any yet. The state has started and we're ready to go with with the, yes, but yes, we hit the corners and the hills and intersections on the roads that we that needed. I don't have anything of significance to report for the airport, you know, we're in the off-off year for projects, so it's just business as usual. There was some weed spraying up there, so that's been done. And Corey's here to report for weeds. He continues to work hard on roadside right now. Along with everything else that he's working on that he'll be reporting on. Solid waste. Contractor's been awarded for the scales that are going in, the north end and the south end. So contractor should be here, I think sometime in December, maybe the new year, and Rory is gonna assist Sandy with that that project.
Are the transfer stations gonna remain open through that process?
Yes.
So.
It's gonna work great because the contractors not working weekends and only open on the weekends, so we'll make sure that everything's accessible.
Okay. And that's in the transfer stage. Somebody asked me if the transfer station's closed, I went here and I told them I didn't think so, they're open.
They're open year round on Saturday, Sunday. What else? We we did get the recycling depot set up in Lexington. We moved, I may have reported on this before. We moved the recycling bins from the south transfer station that's only available Saturday, Sunday and brought them to the public works property so that they're accessible all week. And so far that's been going great and so far no illegal dumping, so that's, you know, we can see it from the office, I think that helps and it's right against the highway, so so far so good. And it's getting a lot more use. Any, that's the end of my report. Any further questions or comments? Was there something else you wanted me to report on that I may have missed?
No.
Okay.
You did okay.
Good. Okay, I thought there was something that I didn't get in the report, but we'll we'll catch up on next, next month. Thank you very much, Commissioners.
Hello. Good, how are you gentlemen? For the record, Matt Kenny, County Surveyor. So as you know, my primary duties require a comprehensive review and approval of county surveyor filings. We verify they comply with current O R S, O A Rs and local government regulations. To date, we had twenty nine survey recordings in twenty twenty four. There's quite a few more to come. I think we might have kind of an end of the year rush a little bit. I'm, I've got some. I've got some myself and then I know of uh. There's a fifty-four lot subdivision called New Dream Estates, um, in Irgan, it's due to be filed soon. Uh, you guys will probably see that come across your desk, um, there shortly. We've had seven partition flats, one replat. Four property line adjustments and then seventeen standard sur- survey filings. And I don't know, I might estimate there could be another. Could be another five, maybe ten before the end of the year, sometimes we get that end of the year push. Regarding the um, the survey records and all the documents that go along with, you know, I've been. Working with planning and um recently with public works, I'm trying to find a more permanent solution to our survey record storage. Um, and I know that um. We've, we've been planning to take them to Irgan and that's still on the table, but um. It's possible we may, may find a place in Lexington for them yet, so um. I'm kind of hopeful that maybe that's the solution we get, just because they're more central, central county. Um, but either way, whether, whether they go to Irgan or whether they stay here, um, we gotta get them out of the Conex, which is a. It's exposed to extreme, extreme hot and cold, um, and those documents are kind of a film type material. They can break down over time, so the sooner we get them out of that con- that condition, so I think we're moving in a good direction, getting that done. It's just gonna take a little more time. Um, and I'm extremely grateful um with the work planning is done and then also um for the offer the public work shared with me recently. Um, if they're working with me on a solution on that. Um, another primary duty of mine is the management of the public land corner fund. It's used for storing government survey corners only, which means section and quarter section corners within moral county. Um, Hetner, Lexington and I own have all had prior uh corner restoration surveys. And I have plans for Boardman and Irgan to be covered by restoration surveys. Hopefully this year, if I plan to do it in twenty twenty four, um, but I'm, I'm really hoping I can actually get it done in twenty five. Um, Yumital County's got kind of a nice template that they use for. Um, going out for RFQ for these things, and so I'm gonna get ahold of Dave Crumbine. He actually just issued a couple for Yumital County and I'm gonna um. I'll probably work with him and Matt and whoever else we can get involved and try to get this. Um, an RFQ sent out and and get something done this year. Likely we'll start in Borden. And then um, right now, the corner fund sits fiscal year twenty three at, I think, around two hundred eighty-nine thousand. So that would be enough funding to fund probably two of those projects and um. And have some leftover, I also. Um, one of the other side programs that offer is a three hundred dollar per corner. Benefit to local surveyors, so if you have a private land survey that you're doing for, for somebody and you find a couple. Section, quarter section corners, if it's, if it's not marking the boundary of your specific property. You're not necessarily required to monument or report on those corners, but my hope is offering the extra three hundred dollar per corner. Benefit that that will, it'll spur those local surveyors to go ahead and get it remon- get it monumented, get a report made, get it filed in the office. And that kind of protects the, the public land a little bit more from there on out, and I have had. I don't know, I've probably had five or six different firms take me up on that, and so it's. It's been successful in part, um, I think a lot of guys would like to see more, obviously, but there's limitations.
And that state fund, correct?
This, the corner fund comes from, um, so like when Bobby reports documents, we get a portion of the recording fees. That are allocated to the land corner fund, and that's primarily what funds that. That fund, and so that's why it does not grow very fast, uh, we have limited recordings in this county, so. It's kind of a big deal when we do do a restoration project, um, so if we can get all our major cities. Covered, I think that would get us a, a good start, and then obviously. Years and years down the road, we can start taking care of some of these other important areas. I, I guess I should touch on it, so public land survey corner, I'm not sure how familiar, but. One township is six mile by six mile square and inside that are sections and there's. Thirty-six sections inside that six, six by six square, and each section. Um, has eight public land survey corners, each, each corner of the square and then each half mile point. On the northwest, south and east lines, so eight corners per one mile square. Uh, and you can imagine in the entire county, that's a lot of public land survey corners, so that's. I, I really wish there was more funding available for it, because that would, you know, the, the longer we go and especially in the mountains, the more property that gets logged. These corners get lost with time, so. It's an important endeavor, um. But I think at priority, obviously, is, is the city's first, because we've had, we have had some issues with. Double corners or things like that, and it would help resolve for all those local companies working in the area. Other business I've been working on is that Wheat Ridge East project. I've been working with um an exterior rep that um is in charge for the road dedications for Spurly. They, they're trying to expand some of the roads on Spurly that they've had to widen for, for their equipment reasons. Um, so I've been providing them with all, um, at least my knowledge of this, um, road dedication pro- process and the statutes and. It'd be similar, kind of like we did in the past for Kill County Road, they're, they're gonna have to come to the board for um approval. And then um they'll have a dedication deed, which would deed the right of way to road purposes, and then the county BOC would then. Um, it's statutory requirement for you to either accept or not accept that road on the system, uh, or as a public road. So that'll be coming down the pipeline. Um, in conjunction with that, they're gonna have to record a survey, and that's required by law too, and um, they're. They've been good to work with, it's been kind of hard to get ahold of people, sometimes we play phone tag a lot, but it's moving forward. And another um Wheat Ridge Associated uh contact I made was their ser- their surveyor. And so they, through their process, they're identifying a lot of property lines um for their project, and they've encountered a lot of. Original corner evidence, yeah, like original government stones or stakes or things like that. I offered them the three hundred dollar per corner incentive to get them monumented, they declined. Um, but he's gonna provide me a file, it's got all the data, all his coordinates for all these positions. And then um my office can work with that over time, and hopefully I can make trips out there and get stuff. Um, re-monumented as time allows, so that would be a huge benefit, because I'm, I'm certain some of those got wiped when they built the roads. Um, last thing I have was um survey equipment that was purchased for the county survey originally. I still have those, um, it's two DPS units and a total station, they're just sitting and I. Um, I guess I'd propose. Anything that you guys would like to do, I thought about maybe public works being able to utilize them. Um, but just something that we can mull around for the future, that any other department, the county that could utilize some of that stuff, um. It, it's, it's available. Yeah, so like the GPS units typically, they, they work in pairs, uh, there's. This is the, the base, this is the most common way, I should say, you set up what's called a base station. Um, over what we would establish a control point, so you, you know, a control point might be a, a rebar on the ground with a cap on it. You set up over that and it collects uh GPS constellation data and you get coordinates off that point, and then. What with the other one, which is called the rover, you, you can, you can move with it and measure other points, the base station stays static, it does not get moved. And the base station broadcasts, broadcasts um GPS corrections to the rover, which gives it the ability to. Measure real-time coordinates within like some sub-centimeter uh level. Even with like one or two second epic uh collection, so. That's, that's the basic um data collection method, so like. Anybody that does, so you have topographic features you want to collect, the road department might wanna. Um, do some, some of their own construction staking, they will lay out a new road or something, that this GPS would be perfect for that. Um, and then the total station works in a similar way, but it's, it's more terrestrial, so it's, it's based off angular. Measurements, you'll have a backside and a foresight and. And it's all based off angular terms, and then it's got an electronic distance meter that measures uh your distances. So very useful tools, um. I just, you know, anything that I do for the county. Um, I've got my own personal truck and everything's loaded up, it's just easier for me just to use what I have, and so that the county stuff. From when I, when I was full-time is available. Exactly, or it could go the surplus route, yeah, and public auction or something.
I, I can work with Max, figure out how to get that equipment, see what we can do with it.
If there's a use for this or between Stephen and Public Works, you know.
Oh yeah, that could be an option too. But it's available for anybody that would think it'd benefit, so. That's all I have.
So the surveys of the property owner wants to find them, can they go online and find them?
Yes, yeah, there's an online database and it consists of an Excel file, which we call the key. And you can search by township range section. Um, there's a couple other, like if you knew the property owner's name and had a survey done, you can search it by that, a couple of options. Um, and then it gives you a, a number, which we call a folder number, then. You open the folder database and it's just in sequence, there's one, two, three, four, all the way down, and you can pull up. Any survey that's filed in the county.
So where do you people go to find that?
That's on the moral kind of surveyor's website.
Okay.
Yep. Yeah, and that's something I do as part of. Um, that's, that's a big part of what I do is the reviews and then the, the filing, which I intermittently go and. Uh, Mike's gracious in the assessor's office to let me use a scanner, so I scan all the surveys and then upload them to the database. So.
All right, hello, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Make me chair sites.
Yes, Corey Sweeney, uh, North County Weed Program Manager. And this is my uh folder we report starting in September. So September started off, um, I'll just hit some highlights here, but uh. Was busy with some uh energy facility, uh, concerns, corrections, uh. Collaboration, um, everybody's been working together, getting on the same page and do the right thing, and everything's been going good. No real issues that I see, um, it, it's been going pretty smooth. Um, so that's been good, uh. I wrapped up the OWEA Thistle Grant in, in September, um. So finished with that, that went well. Um, I attended a meeting with Chair Sykes and Director Irons on the energy weed fees. Um, I met with the Natural Resources Conservation Service, the NRCS regarding rejuvenate applications for the county. And uh this was the first step in a much uh larger scale of grant work, um, coming down the, the road. Uh, moving into October. I uh, I had several meetings, um. One in particular with the Regional uh Conservation Partnership Program, the RCPP. So that partnership program grant meeting with uh Yumital County, um, Lawa and Union Counties along with. Myself, Moro County. And if you remember in one of my previous um. Reports, uh, Moro County and in particular my department was approached about. Entering in and heading this regional, this RCPP grant, um, with Gillum County. And this was sparked by landowners from both and um, and uh chemical companies. They wanted to see this grant and I, it, it was the one where it could be awarded up to twenty-five million dollars. Um, so that was that partnership, it's kind of switched gears, you know, of course, my department is not set up for that, don't have the personnel. Um, yes, it could get paid for and, and whatnot, but um. But this is more switching to a partnership, not with more accounting Gillum, but more um Yumitala, Lala and Union Counties. With Yumital County heading up this partnership, so. And. Also attended a meeting in October, this is kind of ongoing, but. Yeah, we've kind of finalized it for now, but a meeting with Haley and Aldrich to discuss future roles and responsibilities. Regarding energy projects coming into Moro County, so um, as I've reminded. You guys before, it was one Odo rep and then added a Odo rep. Uh, Oregon Department of Energy Personnel and then a halftime Haley and Aldrich, another halftime Haley and Aldrich, and at one time I was. Just about halftime and twenty hours involved with these energy projects, so. Odo has um, kind of shifted strategies a little bit, removing one of those halftime. Um, uh, Haley and Aldrich, uh, consulting personnel. And going with a full-time, this time out, Oregon Department of Agriculture. Um, so they will get involved and they'll have a personnel, um, to have a piece in the game to help distribute the uh. Kind of the, the duties, responsibilities and um. And some of the actions on, on some of these large energy um facilities coming into Moro County to help. Uh, it, yeah, and it's, it's kind of removing that aspect of, of consultation. That was that part-time with Haley and Aldrich and going to a more of a uh documentation. Making sure that things are getting done that are supposed to according to that. Noxious weed draft plan and the site certificate, um. So that, that's kind of the shift and that's kind of the new piece of the puzzle is Oregon Department of Ag now out here. Um, and it's still ongoing, I'll, I'll have more on my next report, but this is. What they've been working on and what I've been involved in, so. Just to give you that date on that, where we're heading with that, so. And then. I held a meeting with Human Resources and uh Director Irons about a future FTE, so my department, we are going out for a future FTE. Full-time next year, starting July first, and also. We've been working on a um, a halftime. Um, or I wouldn't even say halftime, but a. A uh applicator for the road department, it's about four hundred and thirty hours right now for spraying under that contract for Rose Department and a. We're looking at getting a personnel licensed for roadside spraying for those four hundred and thirty hours. Uh, because there's so much with the contracts and the other spraying and everything else going on in the county, so. Um, we've been working on that and I'll keep you posted on how that goes, um. Uh, so yeah, October was just busy. Um, yeah, kind of get it up for the future and, and meetings and whatnot, so. Um, moving into November, um. I met with the county council and commissioner, Chair Commissioner Sykes. Uh, regarding the weed fees for the pilot program. Um, attended a RCPP grant meeting with those counties I mentioned earlier, this time. More involvement with NRCS and Soil and Water Conservation as a collaboration to get this grant underway, um. And then I started the fall residual contract spraying. My contracts include, as you can see, uh, the moral county roads, um. City of Boardman, the Army Corps of Engineers. On three sites here and then on the river, um, Boardman and Irgan, um. Lexington Airport, Moro County Fairgrounds and the city of Hetner. And uh. For the month of November, I accomplished a hundred seventy miles of roadside for the county, forty-six percent of the paved roads. Been completed with spraying and I, yeah, I've just been spraying. Every opportunity I get, uh, Fridays, Saturdays and Sundays, as long as it's forty degrees and rising. Less than ten mile an hour winds and no moisture forecast for the four hours, I'm, I'm out there spraying, trying to get everything.
Those days are getting far.
They, they are, yeah, it's getting tough right now, but. But so, yeah, that's. Um, that's my report, um. I missed a lot, there's a lot in there, but if you guys have any questions or anything else you see, um, yeah.
Well, you know, I appreciate the report during general one.
Okay.
How you, oh, how you settled into your new days?
That it, it's, it's great, it's fantastic, it's uh, yeah. It, it's, just having everything consolidated in one spot is, is, is really shaved off a lot of time and. Necessary um stops and whatnot, it's just made everything more. Necessary stops and whatnot. It's just made everything more efficient. And that new apparatus, I could not complete all this work that I'm doing right now without that new apparatus. It's a pencil without to be, you know, it probably pay for itself in contracts, but I had no idea that it it is these. Paying for itself and so much efficiency with the added, you know, space and gallons I can pack. And just time savings. It's been huge, so it's it's going good, yeah.
All right.
All right, okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Al Scott sent in his letter of her file that he's not going to. Blinking on the word. He's not gonna continue on into the next set of terms for the Wolf Departmentation Advisory Committee. And we'll be doing, hopefully doing appointments next meeting.
And they have to be turned in by this Thursday, right?
I I accepted it till Tuesday, five P M.
Well, the commissioners reports, Roy.
Not really, no. Well, I didn't make a day O C. Yes, did you either, kind of for the same reasons.
I'm gonna be attending the Leadership Summit. Meeting in Portland on Monday. There's a lot of good topics. I've had a hard time figuring out which session to go to. But I think I nailed it down to. The one in the morning is not as hard. Some of them are just specific to. To the Portland area. This is put on by the Oregon Business Plan. And so I probably be going to building capacity for rural economic development. In the morning, I think that's the best from there. The afternoon gets harder. But there's a water one on here that looks very interesting, because it's housing and there's water and there's thicker. But so all of which have worked at us, so. Anyway, managing water for environment, the economy and communities, Oregon's water assets could be better managed. With that, so wide variety of water needs for agricultural communities, industry, the ecology in every region in Oregon. This session, key leaders will propose an agenda for the upcoming legislative session to address data management. Permit streamlining, regional planning. So I'll check in and see what's what they're talking about down there. And one thing I like about something like this, I've gone to before when I was on the Planning Commission. When I went to the Oregon Association of Planners and we met with planners from all over. Mainly it was Upper Planet, but you get to hear what what the what the planners are doing in the Portland area. Port of Portland and their plan there, the Lane County. And you and so you get a chance to hear what's going on around the state. So I'm hoping that's, I think that's the way this is gonna be, you know. See, learn a little bit and hear what else is going on. That's about all I got, so.
So it's, you know, last Tuesday was the E D A meet. And as mentioned, and I handed out to you, it's a company, it's a motion that Yumatilla County wanted to do. Where presented before in March. And then they wanted to do this new thing, which would have the property in Moro County. Would have still stayed with the C D A, but any development out there or anything to do with that property would have. If it's in Moro County, but been only voted on by Moro County. The Port of Moro and the tribes. And basically the same thing on Yumatilla County, it'd be Port Yumatilla, Yumatilla County and the tribes vote on any development or anything that. Had to do with property on the Yumatilla County side of the line. What it did is it still kept everything in the C D A, still kept. Moro County on the hook for any expenses that were earned out there, no matter where they were incurred. And it did still give the correct to say what happened in our county. And I just, I'm going unless you guys tell me otherwise, I'm going to still continue to move forward. Under the plan of transferring, what's in Moro County to the Port of Moro. And they will become the owner of that. And so that was that for that motion. If there's any questions, answer those.
Just a comment, but I, but I'm in agreement with what we've always thought. I think we know our philosophy on that.
Why did I just, you know, Joe Taylor from the board. Made a comment that he would take it back to his commission and I'll bet it. I says, well, John, I'll give you the same percy. I'll bring it back, you know, didn't make any promises other than I let you guys know what he proposed.
The pillars of our eminent, I mean, our best development, Armond County. And I think that property is in Moro County, should be controlled by the N D A. We're we're self and one more of us waiting.
Is it will be on the agenda for next Tuesday, there will be another sheet. So the other updates from the C D A was they've gotten bids to do the explosion site memorial on Oregon Trail Memorial. The explosion site, obviously, is Yumatilla County, Oregon Trail Sites, Lawa Counties. And it's two hundred and twenty five thousand dollars for the site, Yumatilla County, two hundred and nineteen thousand for the site in Moro County. And at this point, since it's all of the C D A, about five members will be responsible for that. So I did them in half. The amount of five, it's eighty seven thousand dollars. So the C D As, we didn't have to contribute to those. Or if it was more counting, contribute to the C D A to make those projects happen. That is contractual, correct?
Right, the two memorial sites were part of the transfer agreement final, right? Those have to be done.
Debbie Pedro is out until January seventeenth. Greg says at this point, you know, there's no indication that she won't be back, that she's been out on lead to until January seventeenth. And then the money that was for the, from the legislature. To build the road, seven million dollars, it is going to be split equally, three million dollars you spent on Yumatilla County side. I forgot about the world coming side. And so the update there is road design is almost done and they're about ready to go out to bid. And they hope to do that in mid-December and start construction in mid-March. One of the things that does come out of that, those that the seven million dollars for the road construction. Is you spend the money and you can do it obviously in stages, but. Then the C D A has to spend the money and estimate invoices to the state to get reimbursed on it. So in order to keep from straining contractors out, you know, sixty, ninety days. The C D A may have to go out and get a line of credit. If, you know, they're talking about two and a half million dollars. And that would, you know, each of us, the five entities would be have some responsibility to them. So, there you go. There might be financial obligations. Again, you know.
Once the road plan is is set and kind of like the river courthouse, I can see concerns where. Three million isn't gonna cover all the roads.
Well, those.
So they're only allowed to build up to that.
Correct.
So there is a top end on that.
Yes, there is, you know, I forget. I guess I didn't break down. I forget how much the actuals. They did design for the whole thing, all the way. And it's well in excess of seven million dollars, of course, but they're going to only build three and a half million dollars on each site standing like that. But the engineering is done to extend it further out. But right now, since there's only seven million dollars to build it, that's all they're gonna spend. Any other questions? Okay.
Okay, I want to jump back for a minute. Just say that there is, question three is. There's, it's getting a little, things starting to happen. Recall when I'm meeting. Uh, next week sometimes.
We did a doodle.
Doodle ball. Did you answer it?
I did, I did.
Okay, yeah, I think I said it.
Just along.
Did you answer yours?
We're both on that.
The stolen, no, I don't know. And and just so you know, in case anybody says this is. It's just the principles, so it's important in the county. I will notify, we will notify everybody. About the meeting, but the voting parties in this one. Uh, well, because it's it's in, it's in the county at large. It's not in any. So anything else in the works?
Well, I guess just one update from A O C that just popped into my mind. It's that John Schaefer, you know. Assume the role as president of A O C for this committee.
Oh, he was?
Because he was in line.
Oh, that's right.
It was Daniels. When out, Schaefer became president.
Was there anybody else?
Did it come to a vote or did they just do progression because he was the next up?
Uh, there was, but but nothing controversial like happened the year before we got in there.
Yeah.
And Joe DeBalskas, Judge Joe from Sherman County, got into the leadership progression, second vice president. So to your point of anybody on her.
Yeah, just.
So, but if you looked at all the officers, they're all, we're all, well, some of them, I think, eastern, you know. You know, you didn't see Motmama or Washington or Clapton County people.
So Daniels is the previous president?
Yeah, Pat, Pat, previous past president, I think he's, she's, I'm sure the next year.
Okay, anything else? All right, with that. Is there any other business that you don't think will be sufficient?
Um, one item, we had received a an agenda request for the fair. It came too late. We didn't want to, you want to address that chair?
Yes. The fair wants to start up having a queen in the court. And they require far action prior to the end of the year. Is that correct? Valerie, could you?
She'd like, um, yeah, so she needs enough time to advertise for court applications. So if we could get a work session, or not a work session, a special session this week. To either approve it or decline it, that way she'll have enough time to notify the media and everyone. To get their applications in by the time court selected early.
Yeah, and they didn't want to, you know, they said a queen in the court is very popular, you know, they also participated. And they were wanting to get that going again. And I think if we're not able to do it by the end of the year, they're gonna have to postpone it for a year. So I'm asking if you will hold a special session on Friday, could just do that one item. Assuming maybe.
I can probably call in. I'd be traveling. I'll be calling in as well.
Just the one item, right? Not be tagging a bunch of other stuff on that. So that's okay.
Yeah, okay. Any particular time or fast rate?
Yeah, I'm curious.
Yeah, as long as it's before three.
Okay, yeah.
Which time zone? Where are you going?
I'm staying in the.
We'll get that phone license sent out to you around by the end of the day.
Okay, thank you, guys.
And then the only other thing I had was on the agendas, we need to update our emails. Because they're still in O R dot U S instead of.
Those will still round, but we should get those updated for for going forward, yes.
Okay, uh, we have a, that's one o'clock. We have a work session at one o'clock.
One thirty?
One thirty, is it?
They're not fixing agenda.
On the agenda. So we don't check me.
That's right.
Okay, so it's one.
Because I just looked at the clock and it says. People are maybe into that. We can be fast. It's all fucked.
Fuck, that's what the agenda says.
Yeah. Okay, we have a work session at one o'clock, so we will be back for that, so. Well, I'm meeting adjourned. Thank you all.